I'd like to call to order the Monday, November 14th, regular meeting of the Farver School Committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Harp?
Here.
Ms. Laravee?
Here.
Ms. Pereira?
Here.
Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens' input, we have a number of them tonight. Deb, if you'd be so kind to read them. The first one is Melissa Machado, Bay Street in Fall River.
Good afternoon. I am writing today to provide input on the topic of funds to be dispersed to the Judge Rothenberg Center. I oppose the city funding a location that utilizes anti-adequate or torturous treatments on their students. Money would be better spent at a facility that works to care for these students using methods that are not abusive or harmful. Electric shock treatment should not be used on a human being ever. I do not want my tax dollars contributing to such ill-treatment to people. Thank you in advance for your considering my input. Melissa Machado, 1025 Bay Street.
Next up, we have Colin Dias, Ray Street, Fall River.
Good afternoon, members of the Fall River School Committee. I am most ashamed to once again see on the agenda that the Judge Rothenberg Center is on the agenda. I believe for well that at a previous meeting, the school committee made it clear that the direction they want to go in is to never support the Judge Rothenberg Center or provide them any Fall River dollars. That point was made loud and clear. I must ask the administration and ask the superintendent why this is on the agenda once again after a clear direction was sent by the school committee at the last time this was brought up for discussion and for a vote. Now, members of the school committee, think to yourselves, would you rather support a contract obligation that shouldn't have came about in the first place? Or would you rather vote to send money to an organization that engages in torture? This shouldn't be a tough vote. This is an easy vote. I couldn't see in anyone's right mind why this would even be considered. I would vote not to send any money to that despicable organization. As the mayor would say in a quote, "It's a no-brainer." And I must ask you, Mayor Coogan, as you crafted the agenda and put this item on said agenda, you were an educator your whole life. Why do you personally support an organization that engages in torture of individuals? And why do you, Mr. Mayor, wish to see the city of Fall River become a state sponsor of torture by sending funds over to the Judge Rothenberg Center? I believe the city, in the public interest, would rather see the school committee not send over money to this organization than to fulfill a measly contract. I personally believe if you vote to send funds over to this organization, you are contributing to the issues over at the center, and that is something I would simply not be okay with. Let's not be a part of the problem. And I hope we do not hear the argument that these funds would not fund their torture techniques, only housing. I do not believe that it is an adequate argument. Any funding to this organization should not be supported. Finally, any school committee member who supports sending funding to this organization should look in the mirror tonight and ask themselves, did I take a vote that is best for this community? Vote no on the Judge Rothenberg Center. Vote no against funding the Judge Rothenberg Center in any way, shape, or form. Voting yes means this city will become a state sponsor of terror. Ending with a quote from one of the mayor's biggest supporters, if you don't move forward, you're moving backwards. Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street, Fall River, Mass.
Next up, Nelson Vasquez, Sunset Hill, Fall River.
Good afternoon, Fall River School Committee. I understand Paul has put on the agenda a vote to send school department funding to the Judge Rothenberg Center in the amount of $176,000. This is after the school committee said loud and clear that they do not support the Judge Rothenberg Center. I know you will hear the naysayers on the committees say they have to support a contractual obligation. However, if you use your moral compass, you should know not supporting an organization that engages in torture is a no-brainer. As Paul Coogan said recently about our movement, that we were way out there. I can say personally, he is way out there on this issue. We should never support an organization that engages in torture. Paul, if you support their policies so bad, resign immediately and become an educator there. Fall River School Committee members, do not send money to the Judge Rothenberg Center, no matter what. Here's a better idea that I have on this topic. Together, let's send a message to the school department, letting them know that we, as a community, do not support this organization. To the superintendent and school department, why is this even on the agenda after the school committee did not support it the last time? Wasn't this tabled the last time? It was on the agenda, basically denied. I hope the school committee does the right thing tonight and vote no on the Judge Rothenberg Center. Nelson Vasquez, 210 Sunset Hill.
Next up, we have Jeffrey Gendrow, Palmer Street, Fall River.
Good afternoon, members of the school committee. I wish to state as I do not want my tax dollars to go to the Judge Rothenberg Center. I would ask my school committee members to use your moral compass. Should we vote to fulfill a contract obligation to the center or vote to not send the JRC money? This organization uses antiquated torture techniques. This is something the city should not support. I do not want to see the city of Fall River become a state sponsor of torture. It's a no-brainer not to support this. Lastly, if the school committee does vote to send JRC funding, the Fall River Insider will bring this matter to the city council. And we will ask them to pull the school committee funding as punishment for supporting a deranged organization. Please, school committee members, do not support the JRC or send one penny to that organization. Jeffrey Gendrow, 229 Palmer Street, Fall River, Mass.
And finally, we have Sheila Dias, Ray Street, Fall River.
Good afternoon, members of the Fall River School Committee. I am writing to you today to respectfully ask you not to vote to send any of my tax dollars to the Judge Rothenberg Center. Despite any contract obligation, city of Fall River money should not be sent to organizations that engage in torture. Any money sent to the JRC is seen to me as support for their methods, even if the monies are not directly used for the torture methods. We should better use taxpayer funds to support our students in-house. That should be the goal of the school committee. Let's use our moral compass and vote no to send JRC any Fall River money. Thank you. Sheila Dias, 560 Ray Street.
Thank you, Deb. We have no recognition awards tonight? Oh. Go ahead.
If I could just respond to the citizens' input. That is an existing contract for our cost share of the education portion of a student that was placed there. We have not placed students there. This is, I don't have the power to decide whether I'm going to pay for a contract or not. I need the school committee to weigh in and to make that determination. So it is back on the agenda because it's an existing contract for a student, one student that is placed there, that was placed there. And we are being asked to pay for the cost share for the educational part of the placement. So that's why it's on the agenda.
Thank you, madam. Mr. Agia?
So who made the placement, then?
That was through DCF.
Didn't he, sorry?
That was through DCF.
So DCF made the decision to place a student at that particular facility?
That child is placed there. They looked and searched for a suitable placement, and that child has very high needs, and that was the place that they...
And you said it was for the educational component?
Yes, that we are obligated to pay for wherever our children are placed, to pay for the cost share for the educational portion.
So what is the percentage of the share? If it's a cost share for the educational component?
I would have to ask Mr. Almeida, but that is for the year, for this year, and we owe for this year as well as for the child was placed a couple of months prior to the end of the year.
Is he not here? Is that where?
He's on his way. He had...
No problem. So when I look on the agenda, it just says it's $176,000.
Yep.
And when you say cost share, I'm wondering, what is that percentage of that? So if it's a 50% cost share, then that's that particular educational component, if what you're saying is $350,000.
Right. It's a student with very high needs. I don't know if Ms. Farias has any information on that, but it's a student that has very complex high needs and needs a placement that is not very, that was not very easy to find, and they placed him there, and this is our portion. It's an outstanding bill.
So we have zero say? So we're paying, but we have zero say in where the student goes? There's no meetings that would take place where we can weigh in?
No, there are. I think that, at the time, Mr. Loesch and the person went back and forth looking for alternate placements. They searched for alternate placements and held off as much as they could finding a suitable placement.
Who would be the person working on that? Wouldn't that be the added district coordinator? For us? Like, who? Mr. Loesch is gone, so we can't go back to him and say who was at the meeting?
But he was here when that was, when that contract was made.
But wouldn't it fall under the coordinator of some type, I would assume?
So the added district coordinator participated in the IEP meetings and determined the services that the student required in the IEP. Not, the student was placed residentially, and DCF applied to the district for a cost share. So DCF funds the residential portion of the bill for Judge Rothenberg Center, and we fund the school time portion.
And you're telling me we can't find for $350,000 another placement for this individual's needs, is what you're saying?
Correct. This was the only placement DCF was able to find that could both meet the student's needs, the student has significant needs, and also had availability in their residential program for the student.
So by that answer, I'm assuming that you mean there is other placements, it's just there was not availability?
There was not another placement that accepted the student. There were packets sent to more than one place. There are, we look at places both in Massachusetts as well as, I mean, they've looked at places as far as Texas for certain children. There was no other facility that was able to accept and meet the student's needs.
Right. Part of my concern, or just trying to be truthful and tell it like we see it, if we have no say, then we should just say we have no say. If the DCF is making this decision to spend this kind of money and be based on the needs, we need the public to weigh in. The public's weighing in on this because they see it here. I don't think we've pushed back enough publicly to say, why should a school committee member take this vote to pay a bill that already exists? That we had no say in, that if we wanted to say, and we had a say, we would shoot down that center because of their practices, whatever it is. We haven't pushed back, I don't think, enough so that we're sitting here saying, oh, what do we do now? Do we pay this bill? We don't know. We're not part of the day-to-day operation, but it's almost like we're part of it, but we're not part of it.
Well, I mean, there was pushback. There was. I know that Mr. Loesch worked with them trying to find an alternative placement, and there was no other alternative placement.
Correct.
I'm sorry. I don't want to interrupt. I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
I don't want to interrupt. I'm just a little confused right now because I thought this was citizens' input, which is fine if the superintendent wants to respond, but this is an item on the agenda. I agree with what my colleague is saying, actually, but we're going to be discussing it when it hits the agenda. And I think we should just kind of like wrap it up and when we get to the agenda, unfortunately...
I'm not the one that commented, so...
No, no, I'm saying, I'm not blaming you, Kevin.
No, I hear you, but I'm saying, what better type of conversation?
I'm agreeing with what you're saying. I'm just saying, let's follow the agenda. We're taking time here. We're going to have the same conversation...
When the time comes.
When the time comes, so, just to save everybody the time.
Item number three, recognition awards. We have none tonight. Subcommittee reports. We have three subcommittees that are going to report out. First, Mr. Agia, Technology Subcommittee.
Yeah, I think we had a very successful subcommittee meeting. Mr. Cabral and his team were already with data points and charts, graphs, and basically presentations that were very, very thorough, and we were very impressed. What we're looking at is being able to hold staff accountable to make sure that we know that they're using the, we're spending a lot of money in programs, and we're actually being able to see how much those things are being used, whether they're effective or not. So the technology aspect of that is going to be much improved going forward. We talked about Chromebooks. We've spent probably millions, I guess, on Chromebooks. And in the past, we haven't had a mechanism to make sure that they're getting replaced and repaired and that students are being held accountable if they break them and they don't treat them with the courtesy that they need to. So Mr. Cabral was able to articulate that as well. And you'll see later on in the agenda, there was a need for a new position that the subcommittee unanimously forwarded. That's going to make sure that we're up to date on all our communications and speaking with one voice. And I think it was a very successful meeting, so kudos to Mr. Cabral, Superintendent Potts, and the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Facilities and Operations Subcommittee, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Subcommittee met on Tuesday, November 1st, at 6:00 on Rock Street. The Facilities and Operations Plan was the only item on the agenda. Mr. Pacheco discussed the need to reorganize the department as it has grown and is made up of various subcommittees, such as security, nutrition, custodial maintenance, building and grounds, and transportation. Discussed at the meeting was that the department has grown in personnel and responsibilities, and there is a need for systems to be put in place that would support the appropriate management of the department. This is an agenda item tonight, and we will hear from Mr. Pacheco that in order to create an efficient department that is supervised and has the attention it deserves, there will be a need for additional supervisory positions. These positions will allow Mr. Pacheco to subdivide the subgroups into manageable subgroups that are supervised by a leader under Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco went into detail as to how each subgroup would function. And tonight, the Subcommittee referred the reorg to the full committee, which is on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Instructional Subcommittee, Ms. Laravee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, November 7th, the Instructional Subcommittee met at 5:30 at the Administration Building on Rock Street. There were three items on the agenda. It was dual-language, an update and discussion on SEL curriculum implementation, and presentation of FRPS, current data, was on the agenda also. The dual-language update was provided by Principal Witty. Ms. Witty stated the student transitions were changed from moving classes one to data remaining in English class for two days and then switching to Spanish class for two days. This was to help increase learning time and decrease daily transition disruptions for our students. DLE has three new teachers from Spain who are making a big difference in the program. Next year, there will be an additional second-grade class for third-year students. Ms. Witty invited all school committee members to visit the vivaris, who observe the program. Claudia Costa gave an update on SEL implementation. Ms. Costa stated, all students in middle school and high school participate in a small-group-based advisory for approximately 20 to 30 minutes, two days a week, and wind blocks, three days a week. Elementary students have what they call daily morning meetings. During advisory morning meeting, students are able to get extra quality time with a teacher in a smaller group setting. Advisory and morning meeting is time-focused on forming positive relationships, age-appropriate goal-setting, and the much-needed SEL work with our students. Dr. Curley presented our current four public schools data. It was a very lengthy and detailed presentation covering school performance percentiles, absenteeism, subject data, graduation rates, as well as the district's plans for moving forward, and so much more. Dr. Curley's presentation was emailed to all school committee members and can be made available to anyone upon request. She will be presenting tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laravee. Item number five is the superintendent's report. She has three things to report on tonight. Superintendent Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, I wanted to share Stop &amp; Shop Food Partnership, the status of that. On Wednesday, November 2nd, we held an event here at Durfee High School. We're Stop &amp; Shop and Unilever partnered to donate personal care products, along with food items for our children and families. Additionally, Stop &amp; Shop has partnered with the Red Sox in a multi-year campaign to strike out school hunger. In the partnership, they pledged to donate thousands of meals to students facing food insecurity. The Red Sox legends Manny Del Carmen and Sam Horn were on hand to help with the volunteer efforts to pack over 575 cases of food and personal care products. And all 150 bags of food and products were prepared for distribution to our families. Durfee High School here serves as a hub for the Stop &amp; Shop Food Pantry in Fall River. That's where all the food and personal care products are stored, packed, and distributed to our students in need across all of our schools. On a monthly basis, the food pantry was created to limit barriers that can impact a student's ability to succeed. And the Durfee Food Pantry was launched in 2019, just prior to COVID. Fall River Public Schools was the first Stop &amp; Shop Food Pantry program. The partnership with Stop &amp; Shop, Unilever, and the Red Sox is critical for our students and families, and we are grateful for their generosity and will continue to collaborate with them as together we work to combat hunger. Also, just like to share a hiring update as of since the last time we met. So for the last month, we have hired 54 employees. 16 of them have been teachers, 19 paraprofessionals, two administrators, seven educational support positions, and 10 operational support positions. Conversely, we lost seven teachers, three paraprofessionals, three educational support positions, and three operational support positions. We continue to work hard at trying to recruit staff. We still have some critical areas, such as special education and ESL, where we are struggling to hire. We're not alone in that, but it is something that we have to work on every single day. And finally, I have enclosed, just like we did in the spring last year, towards the end of the year, shared a calendar for your planning purposes with the holiday season coming. And just as we did, we are sharing with you various activities district-wide so that you're able to plan accordingly. Some of you have asked for information, so it's by school with the logistics date times of when those things are happening so that you can have information and you're free to join any and all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item six is our Student Delegate Report. Welcome, Samantha Agia. Fill us in.
Thank you. Hello. So I'd like to first point out some positive things that have been happening at Durfee. The first one is the AP Capsule Ceremony, and that is a ceremony/celebration for the students that pass the AP seminar and AP Research Exam. And at that celebration, there were college officials that spoke to the students, and over 200 kids were invited to that ceremony. Also, I'd like to point out the One Goal Celebration that will be happening next Friday. I am one of the students that are going to be there. I am enrolled in the One Goal Program, and it's a celebration for the end of the first semester for us college students that are involved with BCC, UMass Dartmouth, and Bridgewater. Also, our pep rally and Spirit Week is coming up. Our first Spirit Week day is Thursday, so we're getting excited for that. Also, our pep rally starts Wednesday, and I'd like to formally invite everyone in the school board that you are invited to the pep rally. Also, this is the first pep rally in three years, so we're getting really excited. I actually just came from a meeting with my class. We were working on skits and props and all that, and I also visited the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and they're all getting so excited. We have our music. We have everything ready. We're all so pumped up and excited to have a real pep rally again, so I cannot wait to see the outcome. So those are some positive things that are happening. And also, something that we're working on, Mr. Demaris and I are working on helping kids find better ways to access water around the school because one problem that the school was having was the ways that kids can access the water. And Mr. Demaris and I worked with Mr. Cutting today, and we had a meeting about the water bottle situation. And Mr. Cutting informed us that we are currently, our prices for our waters and like everything that is being sold at lunch is at the lowest it can be right now. So there's no way that we can change that because he's already doing us a favor by that. So we're working on ways that we can help kids get like, use the bubblers, and we're trying to get Gatorade jugs in the cafeteria with water so kids can have free water. So me and Mr. Demaris are working on that, so I can't wait to give you guys an update next school committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a number of minutes for approval tonight.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minute? We have November 14th, the regular meeting of the school committee. November 14th, the regular meeting of the school committee. I'm sorry. Regular meeting on the 14th, the 14th, and the regular meeting. All the minutes. Any discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have two items for travel tonight, both from Durfee High School. Can I get a motion in a second unless there's any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the travel? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item nine is the acceptance of donations.
Motion to accept donations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll, and then we'll have the superintendent explain them. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Superintendent Potts.
Thank you. From Pell Industries, on behalf of Principal Demaris to Durfee High School, $456.04. On behalf of Ohio, Pyle Prints, to Principal Demaris in Durfee High School, $284.99.[1594.78]
On behalf of Ohio Pyle Prints to Principal Demarest and Durfee High School, $284.99. From Blue Triton Brands, on behalf of Dr. Liz Dunn to Green Elementary School, 15 cases of Splash Blast, 10 cases of Pure Life, and 10 cases of Poland Springs. And from Donors Choose, on behalf of Principal Leacy to Fontica Elementary School, flexible seating sensory items, craft items for hands-on learning experiences. Thank you to all.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item number 10 is the approval of contracts, and obviously, we have a number of them, and anyone that wants to pull any out, tell me now, and we'll vote on those separately. Ms. Roderick's?
Pull out Apollo Safety, JRC, and then the SMEC, so Southern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative.
Okay.
And if we could just do SMEC completely separate from the others?
Okay. Southern, South Coast Educational Collaborative?
No, the one above it.
The one above it, Schwartz, okay.
No, hold on.
Southeastern Mass Educational.
Yes.
Okay, that's the one. Anybody else have any others?
Yeah.
Mr. Agia?
ENE.
Where's that, Mr. Agia?
The second one in.
Second one in, okay.
And then there's one, I just have questions on the Sheriff's Department one.
Sheriff's Department.
Can I just ask a general question, maybe that'll help?
Okay.
So in our packet, we have all this information for all of these contracts. What, if we're voting for the contract, wouldn't we therefore vote to initiate the program? Like, I'm a little confused on some things like the maintenance and things that just happen, but when we're implementing a program for the first time, I'm not sure it's the best process to just say we're approving the money, but we never approve the information. So in here, I'm looking at a program that I never knew anything about, and I'm the chair of the alternative subcommittee. So we're paying a bill, we got a program implemented, paid for by a grant that I never, or my colleagues on the committee, and the full committee, never even saw. So some of these questions are, I think some of these things are contracts, and some of these things are programmatic, that we should probably treat them a little bit different. So in essence, I could have a lot of questions, but maybe if you can weigh in on what the thought process is, so that if that's the case, maybe we pull some and get a presentation first, or if we've already agreed, other things that happen, we always agree to things, and then when we sign the contract, three months later around here too. So that, if that's the case, then.
So we're giving you backup for the contracts. Are you saying that this committee wants the information prior to us putting the contract? Some of these are continuations of contracts. Are you saying that to inform the committee of, because we, any grants, we're telling you ahead of time that we're applying for grants, but we can certainly, you're saying that you want that information prior to coming to the school committee and prior to?
I can only speak for me as one member. What I'm suggesting is though, if I can, if I can speak really quick, not to interrupt, I completely agree, because sometimes when some of these things come in front of me, like Ms. Agia was saying, I would like a little bit more information just to know what's going on, so completely agree with what you're saying.
Are we already, I'm only, my question is, is this one already up and running, like you said? Are we already into it? We're into it?
For some of them, we are.
Like the sheriff's one?
I think, I believe that the sheriff's one was training, that they did, certainly Mr. Pachico.
It sounds, it looks like Mr.
Oh, Mr., oh, okay, go ahead.
Just the sheriff's one, then we'll take care of that one.
It has nothing to do with training.
Right.
We're on a different.
This is contracted services.
The one I'm looking at is not training.
Yep, this is, this is for the RPA, RLM RPA.
Yep.
Yep.
So the Sheriff's Department program is not up and running yet. The goal is if it is approved tonight or at a later date to get it up and running semester two at the end of January. So this is a program in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department to support students at RPA, specifically ages probably 12 through 14, grade seven, eight, and nine. There's intensive wraparound supports, there's mentoring, there's outdoor experiential learning for the students where they're developing leadership skills, et cetera, and it has a good track record of building leadership qualities in students.
Yeah, so like, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this by no means, but the process is screwed up, so that if we have a grant that says we're going to create, and we're going to go to a program, there's a process that should go to the subcommittee first to potentially say, this is what we're thinking about for alternative, for the reasons that you said. Then at that point, we vet it. We would say, I read it today. It says there's two FTEs that are going to be here working, whatever. What does that mean? Are they going to be here full-time, or are they only going to be here part-time? I saw in there today that it is only for 20 students. 20 students and 70,000 is $3,500 a student. Is that something that's valuable? To weigh in on it is, I think, a role of the school committee. So now we're getting this approved here, we don't know half of these things, and there's not a mechanism for this committee to meet other than at a subcommittee meeting or in a regular meeting. So I'm not trying to stop some of this, it's just procedural, it gets tiring after a while if we're not having any say as a school committee on what we do. So I'm not trying to, you know, stop the program, but I think we went about it the wrong way in general. So if you want to just, we can go individually, we can go to all of them, but I know we're trying to move this along.
Well, we got a discussion on this one right now, Mr. Agia. Do you want to vote on this one, since Drew?
Yeah, why don't we pull, why don't we just at least pull that one?
Okay.
But I think philosophically, if we're not going to say what we, what is the superintendent's direction on what to bring? We're just looking at a list of so many things. I think we got to agree philosophically whether we're going to have these things go before a subcommittee or not. That's not a decision that one member can make.
I agree. So when looking at it, how many of these are brand-new, Superintendent? Or continuations, do you know?
I, I'm not sure. We'll have to go through each one, Mr. Almeda.
Mr. Almeda? Well, like, look at the tuitions, I'm pretty sure those are continuations.
Right.
Well, I don't, we got, we got the first two are stops anyway, so why don't we go?
Yep.
Apollo Safety, we'll go one at a time, guys, we'll vote on them all, well, unless we get to the group, the groupings. Ms. Roderick, you had questions on Apollo Safety?
Yeah, I just had a question about that. This is the first time that I've seen it on the agenda, but this was something we had talked about like a year ago or so, so I was just curious.
This is the final purchase for the dispensers?
Okay.
To be sure that now are covered in all of the schools?
Okay, because we had dispensers already in place.
High school.
Right, at the high school.
And some middle.
Right, and then we were moving into the middle.
So this is finishing the entire district.
Okay, that's my only question. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Apollo?
How long ago was that? I recall hearing a discussion on this a year ago.
Last year, high school.
About a year ago.
The product, the product is 10 to 12 weeks for delivery each time, so we heard, we ordered, waited for delivery, installed, and this is, this is the same thing. We needed more, they didn't have more at the time. They only sent us what they could possibly get their hands on at that time. Once they were able to get more, that's what this is, the final count of what we need across the district.
So we didn't order, and if we needed 400 at the beginning?
We didn't order them because they couldn't get their hands on them, so I didn't, we didn't order them. They wouldn't take an order they didn't have product for because they wouldn't be able to hold the prices.
So it's a year old, but we're going to get it?
It's less than a year old.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's less than a year old.
I just want to have, any questions on that Apollo? Deb, please call the roll. Oh, I need a motion in a second.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Deb, please.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, yes. The second one that we were asked to hold was ENE Systems. Ms. Roderick's?
No, that was Mr. Agia.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia.
Just the same question, as I believe last month or the month before, I asked for some sort of summary document to know where we're spending a lot of money with ENE and doing all different things, and I don't recall ever seeing it, but is this?
This is a contract extension, so we put ENE out, we put our services, our HVAC, BMS, and control services along with labor contracts for the heavy, large quantity, large description items out to bid, and usually every three years, this year, we're going, it's going out to a five-year contract. Those documents went out, there was a floor in the document on a couple of pieces that required us to do a rebid. Those bids will be opened, if I'm not mistaken, next week. So this is a three-month extension to hold us over for the previous month, this month, and next month, so that we're sure that we'll have a contract in place to cover us for any emergency work. This is not work we can do inside the house. This is a work that's never been done in-house, we don't have the capacity.
But it's not done in-house, it hasn't been in the past either.
No, it has not. It has not, and it won't be in the future. It's a different kind of work that we're not equipped to do.
Yep, so my question is just, I'm assuming that you're probably working on getting whatever, like a summary, so we know what is ENE and these other companies, so we can get an idea of what they?
Well, the document itself, the RFP document itself is very descriptive as to what this includes. So it tells us by school what it includes and what it doesn't include. So it's, it's already a printed document.
Right, but it's big money.
It is.
It's not a small contract.
It's 66, roughly 66,000 a month. We have two people on site every day doing work for us.
Yep. But how does that fit, my question is on how does that fit into the, it has nothing to do with this necessarily, but the big picture of how does this fit into proprietary services, what they're doing, what they're not. We need the summary version, that's what I'm asking for.
So I can give you the RFP, because that's the summary version. That's exactly what we put together so that we know what they're working on and what's included in the bid, and I can get you that document.
Yeah, and it tells you what they, what they're supposed to do and not do.
Exactly.
And then is there other companies that do similar things for other buildings?
That's why we bid, no. Well, we have two other companies, we're slowly, we're slowly trying to phase out some of these other companies because they're much more expensive, and the proprietary work that they do locks us out of our own systems.
And you're saying ENE, just because they've gotten the contract all the time, they're not proprietary and they don't lock us in?
The equipment, the equipment is proprietary, but there are other companies, there were, there are probably three to five companies that could bid on this work that have access to the same access as ENE. So it's proprietary to us because we're trying to keep our systems like, so that we're not dealing with three, four, or five, seven companies.
Yep.
And again, it's not the school department's fault. When we put out bid for buildings, on the other side, we're putting out bids, and it's a little bitter on all 149.
I understand, I guess I'm just looking for, for you to explain to the committee in a, in a quick way.
Sure.
To the superintendent of why this is a good, a good thing and why you recommend it. That's basically what I'm suggesting, because it's like $800,000 a year or whatever, that's a lot of money. So you could probably justify it to us, but that's my only, what I'm looking for, basically. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on ENE Systems? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay, so in the next group, we have grant contracts. We had one poll, I think the others are mostly existing, unless someone has one that they want to pull out. I know we have one already, I believe it was Bristol County Sheriff, which we just talked about.
Judge Rothenberg.
And that'll come up in the, in the tuition, special education contracts. So why don't we take everything up to the special education contracts? Can I get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I had a motion in a second on, on the grant contracts up to where we hit special education contracts. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, when we get to special education contracts, we have two that have already been asked to hold Justice Resource Institute and Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative. Does anybody have any others?
Judge Rothenberg Center.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I circled the wrong one, the one above it, okay. No others? Can we get a motion in a second on approving the others?
Make a motion.
Second.
Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. First one up for discussion is the Judge Rothenberg Educational Center. Ms. Dragia, you started.
I can't really follow exactly what you're saying, but I thought you were, we were holding the Sheriff's Department one since?
That was on the first page.
Yep. But are we going to go back to that one, or are you doing the second part first?
We can go back to that one, it is, it did have a hold on it. I thought we finished it, but why don't we do that one first? Because Mr. Agia is correct, they're out of order. Bristol County Sheriff, Mr.
There was no vote on it.
There was no vote on it, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion in a second on the Bristol County Sheriff? Do you have a discussion point?
Yeah, this wasn't part of the regular motion, we just, because I voted yes, so.
That's what I thought, but.
It wasn't part of it, we, I thought we pulled it.
Okay, so let's go to, let's go to Bristol County Sheriff.
So I'd like the superintendent to weigh in to, I'm not trying to be against this particular program, but I think we have to get the system in place of what we put on the agenda and not.
Do you want me to weigh in on the system or what this contract is for?
On the system, just so we know like what.
Right, I would like to be clear on it also, because the last time we had all these contracts, we were asked to provide backup in the agendas, which, which we have as backup information for all of you. So what I'm hearing is for us to provide it ahead of time prior to the meeting, so that you can get some information prior to if it's anything new that we're entering or going to be asking you to enter into contract with. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, that's, I think, a good practice, so that we're, we're not having a program, and then we're like, oh, what was that program? We shouldn't have that, in my opinion. So in this case, I'm assuming you, somebody must have vetted this, somebody must have presented this to you to vet, so that you said as superintendent, yes, this is where we want to spend 70,000.
Yes, this was part, this was part of a grant and part of the work that's being done at the Robert Almedares RPA. So certainly, I think that we can, we didn't have, we haven't had an all subcommittee meeting, so we haven't had an opportunity to discuss that work, so, but usually, and I think that we've done a pretty good job at having regular subcommittee meetings where we bring anything forth. So yes, you're right, we didn't come before the subcommittee to talk about that work.
Was this in the grant, we keep saying it was part of the grant. In the grant, it says we were going to go to this program for the Bristol County Sheriff's Office?
That's the piece that was chosen to do that work with our kids.
Correct, it was part of the SEL Mental Health and Behavioral Supports Grant through DESI. We're currently in year two of that grant.
But we didn't have it in the first year?
Year two, we entered into, year one, and we, I think we received the grant in January or February of last year, so we did a lot of planning and research in terms of what supports that we wanted to bring to our schools that would impact student outcomes, and we identified True Course as a potential partner for us through some conversations with the sheriff's office right prior to the summer. Those conversations, so we identified them on the year-two grant as a contractual potential expense. Those conversations continued over the last month, and we're here bringing it to you today.
Did you say before summer, you had this conversation with them?
We, we had initial conversations in June, right before the summer.
When did the grant go in?
Can you repeat that?
When did you submit the grant that had this company in it?
The year, the year-two grant was in July that we submitted.
And it's November 15th, so.
So prior, prior to submitting grants, we notified the school committee what we're applying for.
Right, I'm just wondering, it sounds like as if this has been studied, we're going to go through with it. Then why is it not implemented and it's November 15th? So now if I say, let's table this to get more discussion, we're now going to be another month behind. So to your point, you put it in there, so come to the committee then, instead of coming to the committee after, but now we're going to make a decision to wait another month? I don't want to wait another month. If you think it's a good program, and they run a good program, it's going to help 20 kids, even if it's expensive, let's try it. I have no problem with it, but it just, it doesn't, it's illogical in my mind to just be doing things backwards. So I'm going to make a motion to approve, but please, let's look at a way to do it better in the future.[1534.01]
Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Aguirre.
Second.
I have a motion second. This is on Bristol County Sheriff's. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Now, back to the holds under special education contracts. The Judge Rotenberg Educational Center. Any discussion on that item? Ms. Rodericks?
So when this came up back in June, we had talked about Mr. Loesch was supposed to go back out and resend out packets with DCF collaboration. In my experience, when kids go, and this is just my experience negotiating from the residential side, what typically will happen is the school department has to agree to the placement in addition to DCF. So it's not typically, and I could be wrong in this particular case, but it's not typically that the school department doesn't have a say. Usually, that's a conversation and both have to agree to that placement. If this is a kid who already came in with that placement, like was new to us from the district, then that puts us in a little bit of a different situation, but we can still denounce that practice. The other piece I have a concern about is that in the information that was provided with the contract, it says that JRC does not use electric shock therapy on their school age population. So school age population is typically up through age 12. So is this a student who's over the age of 12? And, because that's a very vague statement to make. And having worked with them before, it's typically just their blanket, we don't use this on students that are school age. This is a program that's been denounced by the United Nations. This is a program that the FDA has denounced the use of electric shock therapy. It's been held up in court, which is the only reason why they're still allowed to do it. And whether or not our student is allowed, or is, they're allowed to provide that kind of, I can't even use the word treatment. But regardless of whether or not that's the case, they are still witness to other students. And so I'm not in the business of agreeing to trauma upon trauma. Because a kid goes into residential because of trauma. So I understand that maybe we agreed to a contract, whether or not that kid came in with that contract, whatever, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't push back on it.
So we did agree to the contract. The contract was signed, the cost share request was signed prior to the committee's concerns in June. Mr. Loesch did go back to DCF. They did explore alternative placements for the student and have been unable to find an appropriate placement that is able to take the student.
So I can appreciate all of that, but typically too, when a school department disagrees with a placement, especially a placement like this, this is not their first rodeo. They've been down this road before. DCF often has fully funded a placement. We don't necessarily have to agree to that. Now, unfortunately, that contract is signed. We did agree to that, but it was an agreement prior to any discussion about such a high-profile setting like this. You know, I go back to, I don't really have a question, just a statement about it. But we promote what we permit. So if we are allowing a student to be there, and in this case, we are, and we've got to own that, then we're promoting that that's an acceptable use of strategy, and I can't support that. Again, I don't have a question. It's really more around a comment.
And to your point, we do own this. We have a signed contract with DCF for the cost share. We do own this. I will tell you, we have had a request from DCF for a cost share for another student for this facility that we did refuse. Student is currently still in a hospital placement, waiting for, to step down into an appropriate residential facility. To date, this has been the only one DCF has been able to find for that student. So the student remains in a hospital setting because we have declined the cost share for that particular student.
Which, to be fair, JRC is really not going to look any different than a hospital setting. I yield. I don't have a question. I just have a statement about it.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Aguirre? Okay. Shelley?
Okay. You went, it's a little hard to hear sometimes when you're talking down there over there, so if I repeat a question. So we do sign off. Who's responsible for signing off on a referral such as this? So if DCF or a parent, if a child needs services the school district can't provide, like this scholar, they come, we're responsible for paying for that, but who here is responsible for signing off on that?
The Assistant Superintendent of Special Education. No, for these, for cost shares with DCF, it's the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education that signs off.
Now, if we said, from in and out, or even for this child, if we said, we are no longer, we're going to make kind of a standing statement, we are no longer going to, and this is for whoever has the answer to it, we're no longer going to send our scholars there. We're just never going to sign off on that. If there is no other placements, like do we hold any legal obligation to eventually have to do what the parent or the guardian says, or can we just say no?
Or DCF.
Yeah, whoever's, whoever has custody of this child, whether it's DCF, whether, I'm sure there are times it's, you know, they're still in the homes with the parent, with their parents. So if a parent is coming to us saying, this is where I want my child placed, or DCF comes and says, this is where, you know, this is the only place that can service my child right now, who is at dire need of any kind of services or care. I'm sure it is similar to a hospital. The only thing is hospitals often don't have the level of supervision as some facilities, if this is a child who self-harms, whatever. It's really hard to discuss this when you don't know the child, you don't know the circumstances. I think we can all agree that place is gross. It should be closed down. But I think the way that's going to happen is if, you know, we talk to our legislators to make this, to ban this, this treatment, which for, you know, lack of a better word. But the reality is, this is what we're in right now. So my question is, are we allowed to refuse? Like, can we say going forward, we're not working with this place? If DCF or a parent comes to us and says, this is the only place, are we legally obligated to pay for it anyway?
So I would want to consult our attorneys, but my best response to that is they would have to take us to hearing.
Okay.
To force us.
I'm sorry.
They would take us to hearing to get the placement determined by a hearing officer.
Okay. Look into that, just because I think that's information that we need to know going forward. Clearly, I'm getting, I certainly know my opinion, and I know the opinions of my colleagues. This is the second time we've had this conversation. None of us are for funding this school, but I want to make sure that we're doing what's, what we're legally responsible to do.
And we have shared that with DCF moving forward.
To create lawsuits for the city of Fall River.
No, understood.
Not what I want to do. But I also want to make sure that we're putting kids first and we're doing what's right by them. So I would personally like to see us not use that place again. Now, is the student still there right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Student's been there since May.
Okay. And this student, the funds that are requested here, are these, like, services already rendered? Like, this is tuition from last year? This is current tuition?
It's, I believe, a combination. Correct. For this school, yeah.
So...
Already rendered?
So basically, September and now, already here. Okay. And there's no thought process from DCF, obviously, because they're still referring kids to this program? There's no thought process of maybe still trying, attempt to find this student?
We have asked that they continue to look for an alternative placement for the student. There just aren't any.
Okay.
Residential placements right now are extremely limited. We have a few students that are waiting residential placement that we have sent out several packets to a variety of schools here, in New Hampshire, in New York. We've been unable to identify appropriate residential placements for a few kids.
So this child that's in the hospital, how long is he, or she, going to be able to stay there before the hospital says, okay, you've got to go?
I do not have a timeline on that. I'd have to check with DCF.
I imagine there will be one?
I would imagine so. It's no longer the level of care the student requires.
So if we said no to that child going to this, you know, if you said, no, we're not, we're going to stick our ground, what would happen to that child?
The student remains in their current placement, awaiting an alternative placement.
But if the hospital kicks them out, they have no placement?
Well, there's some grounds to have them keep them as a stay put while we look for alternatives.
Okay. That's what I want to hear. Okay. I do realize that it's harder and harder to find placements for kids with these needs, but I struggle with, it's not just about finding a placement, it's about finding a safe place. And just because it's a placement doesn't necessarily mean it's going to improve the life of that child whatsoever. And I think this, this place is one of those places. So if we don't pay this bill, what happens? Like, we just say, nah, we're not giving them the money. We don't approve of this. What happens? Are they going to, legal action? They're going to keep sending us a bill? They're going to kick the kid out? What's?
I would imagine multiple of those, that legal action and actions to try to terminate the placement.
Do we see anything, and I know you're probably not privy to all the information regarding this child, but is there a thought that this child's just going to be here this year?
No.
Okay.
No, I do, I know the student well, and that is not likely the scenario.
Okay. Okay, I mean, unfortunately, we're in a situation now where we have a bill that if we don't pay, we may suffer legal issues. We may have a child who is in maybe a worse situation, which quite frankly, I don't know that I can imagine, because my colleague is right, whether probate clause allowed them to use, you know, GD treatments, treatments on him or not. If he's, if you're in that environment, it's a very...
We did reach out to them, specific to the student and the concerns that have been raised and their compliance. The response they gave us was that it is not a treatment used in their school age program. He is over the age of 12, but the inquiry was specific to the student, and they provided us with their updated program guidance. They are, they continue to be an approved school through DESI.
Yeah, except last year, the FDA banned the use of this and had to go back to court twice, and now they get to use it again. So I don't have much faith in their board or anyone that runs that school, quite frankly. But I appreciate you letting us know what, you know, what they, what they said. I mean, I think it's important too, and the amount of constituents, you know, citizens that reached out today, the concern is valid. You know, we don't want to be funding something like this. As far as this bill, you know, today, I feel like we're kind of stuck. Because if we don't pay it, then we're going to cost the taxpayers more money. And I don't think it's going to be beneficial for that child, because he'll probably still remain there and we'll just rock up the bill for the rest of the year. Hopefully, if maybe we articulate that Fall River is not a place that this is going to be easy to come by, we're not going to sign off on this. So if you have a DCF worker or guardian that's saying, this in fact is my only option, then I'm fine with saying, okay, then take us to court for that. Let's advocate for these kids. But that's a little different to me than just paying a bill. I think that all the people that wrote in today, as well as the school committee, I mean, I think there's no reason we can't get a letter together and send it out to every state rep and senator, because that's, this, it has legislation that has to be changed to protect these kids. That's the bottom line. We can't expect a business like this, because it's a business. They're making a lot of money. As Kevin's like, 176 for part of it? Yeah, it's crazy. So this, make no mistake, there are people making some good money over there on the backs of our kids. So I think we need to go forward. We need to, I don't know, kind of think hard and find a way to navigate this so that we potentially can just always say no and never put a child in that, in that situation again, until we feel comfortable that they actually have stopped using these therapies and actually are operating in the best interest of all of the kids there. Which, if this was, again, if this was just controversy 20 years ago, and I could be convinced they changed, that's great. But they've been having complaints like a couple months ago. It's continuous. So I know that this committee doesn't feel comfortable with having children placed there, so I would hope that we can work in a direction that that doesn't happen. Because if this does pass tonight, it'll probably be the last time you see us giving money to that institute. So that might be one of, something you want to tell the DCF worker as well.
Yeah, I'm happy to circle back to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Aguirre?
Can I get an answer to that percentage question from before? $176,000, what does that represent?
So that represents the school portion of the program. And so each day that the student is in school, student also has a one-to-one aide assigned to them, so it funds the one-to-one aide during school hours. DCF funds the one-to-one aide and the residential portion.
So it's not a cost share on the educational component?
It's not a cost share on the education. We fund the education, and DCF funds the residential.
So the tuition is 180,000 per year?
Is that correct?
Basically. And then eligible for circuit breaker? So we pay 35? So part of the problem, I think, is that this is going to keep going on and on. Because if we pay for this now, you said it earlier, that somebody signed off from the administration. So they signed off. So that, to me, tells me that they said it's okay to pay this. So now, I think, the fact that that's what happened, I don't know how we can deny the second person. So now we're saying we don't want to pay anybody now, but we already, we're paying one. So if the logic is that this is not harmful to the child, which I'm assuming that Mr. Loesch, when he signed off, said in his opinion that it wasn't harmful to the child. So if we're going to say that, okay, let's pay this bill because we signed in and it's DCF and this and that and all these other reasons, then it defies to me why we wouldn't pay for more kids then. I don't want to pay for any of them, but we've already, we've already said we were going to pay this. That's the part that I'm missing. I think that, I've never seen the sign offs, like, the superintendent, did you have to sign off on this too? Or was this prior to you?
No, it was prior.
Prior to you becoming superintendent? So who was the superintendent that signed off on this?
The superintendent did not sign off on it.
The superintendent doesn't sign off. The assistant superintendent signs.
It's DCF and the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education.
So the Assistant Superintendent can sign something without the superintendent's authority? I think that's another issue that we should address.
That's the agreement, yeah. That's the way the agreement's set up.
But the superintendent of schools is the boss. She should be the one having to sign off. Mr. Loesch, in his infinite wisdom at that time, should not have the ability to sign this contract without the boss, whether it's Mrs. Ponce or Dr. Malone. Signing something like that doesn't make sense with all the controversy that's here. And now we're stuck here, we're going to figure out what to do. But when you had mentioned that now that we said we're not paying for another student, if that's the case, why can't we do it with this one? And I know you said that we're already paid, so why don't we, why don't we pay what we owe right now and say, we're not paying anymore, go find another placement?
And I will definitely connect with DCF again. We did let DCF know that we do wish to locate a different placement for this student, but they have, and Mr. Loesch did that back in the spring when objections were first raised. But DCF has not been able to find an alternative placement for this student.
So what is the agreement from July? Is this a year-round placement?
One year.
It's a, it's a 365-day, no, 365-day placement.
So do you know when it began?
In May.
And so we paid last year already?
We have not paid them anything.
We tabled it.
It came before.
Yeah. May 11th is when the student was placed there.
Right. We were just told that this amount of 176 is for the year, 12 months. You're saying now in May. So last year, we had May, June, so we had two months last year. Where is that money? Did we already pay that? Is it part of the 176? So what the heck, I mean...
I have the $23,000 in comber. I have not paid it. I've got it in comber. I've helped, because it was tabled. I've helped.
So why is that not before us?
Because it's going to come off the table. I can't take it off the table myself. It's going to be taken off the table.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Absolutely.
The contract was, was tabled at that, at the June school committee meeting.
Correct.
And I can't, I can't put it back on, on the agenda without it being taken off the table by the school committee.
Did you ask the superintendent to put it back on the table?
We talked about it.
Well, why is it not here then? Madam Superintendent, why would that not be here, but we have the current one?
I asked for guidance in regards to the contract. I will say, so that's what we wanted to know, what we were doing with the bill that we have. They continue to, to send us bills. I needed to know what we're doing.
So where is the $23,000 that was tabled on this agenda?
It's not on this agenda.
But we have a whole different, eight times, nine times as much money. Why not address it? Like, I just don't know the logic behind not putting that one here. So we, if we're going to take this up, we should take it up in one shot.
I, Mr. Aguirre, I don't disagree, but this is a new contract related to this year. Last year's contract was tabled, so in order to get the other contract, if you, if you can take it off the table right now, make the motion right now, put it back on the table, let's do it. But I can't just put it back on the agenda without it coming off the table.
Right. And you know, just like I do, that I don't make the agenda. I don't have input on the agenda. The administration is the one that has to put that on.
Understand.
That's part of the problem. So I didn't say not to put it on, but we already owe two months of that. So we have an old bill on top of this bill. At some point, we got to address this one way or another. And it seems like we don't have everything in order here. So what I'd like to do is make a recommendation that we pay for six months of this contract, and you go back to the DCF and say, we're not paying any more than the six months, and we need to find another placement for the current school year. I'll make that in the form of a motion and...
Mr. Aguirre, are we, are we paying the six months of this contract plus the two months we owe?
We can't pay that because it's not on the...
It's got to come back off the table. Okay. So we can put that on the next agenda?
I would say, but we need to push the envelope here.
Okay.
So at some point, we either deny it all, or do we at least pay for something and say, hey, give yourself a couple of months to go and find a different placement?
Okay.
So, can I just, one thing about the six months? So this student's school year started July 1st. And so six months is only going to give us five or six weeks to identify. There's no way we're going to identify a placement in five or six weeks. We can't identify day placements that quickly right now.
Yep, I understand that. And if we vote no, guess what? Now we have no months.
No, I understand that, but could we go further than six months just to give us time to work with DCF to get packets out and programs to review them? I just know we're going to come back because there's, it's truly impossible that this is going to be resolved by the end of December.
I totally hear you, Mrs. Farias, and I apologize that you're into this position, because you went the one that signed off on it. But Mrs. Rodericks, to my right, has asked these questions for six to eight months to put the packets out, to look for the placements. No one has any urgency, that it appears to me, to actually get this done, other than that, oh, Michael Loesch signed the contract and we're stuck with it. So my point in doing this is to try to say, let's push the envelope and tell them for real that we're not paying it, which I thought we did with the two months. That's why we denied the last two months. I don't know that the urgency's there to say to them, we're not paying.
I believe additional packets were sent by DCF, but I'm happy to get that information for you.
Right. She asked that six months ago, when it first came up.
But there was communication. When, when that was asked, there was communication, and there were packets sent out. They haven't been able to find a placement. I mean, I, I wasn't the one who signed off, but I will take responsibility, because this is our district. To say that there's no urgency, nobody agrees in creating trauma by placing a child. Nobody here. We want the best placement for our children. We have, we are struggling to find a placement for this child. So we will do that, our due diligence and absolutely send, communicate, send out packets again. But, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't know if it's for a lack of urgency. I think that it's for a lack of placement availability.
But if you're going to do that, then, and if that logic is what we're going to go by, that we can't find a placement, which is what I had said earlier. If that's the case, that you're going to say, we can't find a placement for certain children based on their disabilities, so we had to go to this placement, and as superintendent, I feel like this is an okay place to send the child, that we're not going to harm the child. If that's what we're saying, then we can't at the same time come up and say, but we told them we're not going to let the other kid leave the hospital to go. Those two things cannot exist together. So if we're saying, okay, it's a tough case, we have to pay this placement, then let's not ban it altogether. I'm only one vote. But you can be coming to us to say, listen, we've tried everything, and with all due respect, we've checked it out. We've visited the place. We know that the children are getting treated well there, and this is the only place we can find. It defies logic to then say, but we're not going to allow it anymore in the future. So if we can allow it like that, then we shouldn't be paying this one. If we're going to say we should pay this one based on your strong recommendation, and like I just said, then I don't think we should ban it forever.
So our position after June, Mr. Loesch did go back to DCF, and our position has been that we are not in agreement to the student's placement there moving forward and will not agree to further children being placed there. But the fact still remains, we need to find a different placement for this student. And we have another student with a similar profile, who they have been searching for a couple of months for a placement and continue to be unsuccessful. So I don't think we're saying to you that we agree with the... So I don't think we're saying to you that we agree with the placement, but what we're saying is, one, we've signed off on this. And so we do need to deal with the fact that we've signed off on this, and we've been unable to find the student a different placement.
Just a quick point of order, quick, quick, Mr. Agia. Mr. Agia said six months, which, which I, I think that's a good idea. However, you think it should be extended over six months?
So six months would take us to December 31st.
As far as you're concerned, what's your, what would be your recommendation if that's the path that we want to go?
I mean, I would try to give DCF until the end of the school year to find an alternative placement because they've been looking for months for other students. And we have a student that is not DCF, that we've been looking for a residential placement for since the summer and have still been unable to find a placement for.
Wow.
I don't know, I mean, that seems like a, I mean, like, six months was fine until she said she has a problem with the six months. So if we can extend it to the end of, the end of this year, that might be the alternative to go with.
That's paying, that's paying, yeah.
We're going to extend it for years.
Now, that the student you just said they've been waiting however many months for, what's, what's going on with that student right now?
That student is home.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Has the other district coordinator ever visited this place?
I cannot answer that, but I will ask.
Can, Madam Superintendent, can you please ensure that a staff member goes and watch and visits the school, including this child's education, and create a written report for the school committee by the next meeting, explaining what their, what their opinion is and what they've viewed? And then with that, I make a motion to table this till next month.
Can I just?
Pereira.
I have a comment, too. I guess that, I understand where, where Mr. Agia is coming from in terms of, I guess, is it, is the hypocrisy. But I guess I look at it like this, what we're talking about right now is a contract we already signed. By "we", I mean the powers that be, not us up here. Already signed. So we signed a contract and we said, "We're going to put our child, this child, in this school, and this scholar will be placed in this school", and we signed a contract for an entire year? Is that what this cost is? It's for the full year?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm suggesting, which I do think in my opinion is different, I'm suggesting, yes, we pay the contract we signed because that child is there, the person who has custody of that child wants them there, whether that's the state or not. That's the person who's responsible for the care and protection of that child right now. We need to push DCF and let them know that just because we're paying this year doesn't mean we're going to pay next year. But the bottom line is, this kid is now in a bad situation, that he's here with nowhere to go. Because you said the other child was home. That's nice to have a home, isn't it? I'm assuming if this child is in DCF custody, home is not a safer place.
Correct.
And I don't think the DCF worker can take that child home with them. So that leads me to go, where does this kid go? If there's not foster care to take him, if there's not another facility that can help this child, it's all well and good for us to, you know, speak on this topic the way we are because to me, the place needs to be fixed. I, I'll say that till I'm blue in the face. But you have to look at all sides of this coin here. This child doesn't have a safe home to go to. This place is not the best, and we need to find better. But I believe you in saying that there's no way the DCF worker is going to get that done in six weeks in between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And I'm sure the vast caseload that he or she has. So setting us up for that is setting us up, I think, for problems. And quite frankly, even if we all sat here and said, "Okay, we'll pay eight months of it", I'm assuming they're going to say, "Well, that's nice of you, but you're still not fulfilling the contract because you signed a contract for a year placement for a hundred, whatever, thousand dollars. That's what you agreed to pay. So now we're backing out on that". So what I think, and my point, is saying, this time it's sort of shame on us because we, not us, but there was some balls dropped, if, in my opinion. Because I think if you said no at the beginning, it, they'd be a different situation. But this is the situation we're in now. And what I'm saying is, yes, I do think we have to pay this bill because basically that is till the end of the school year, it's July. So it's July to the end of June, that's his year, July 1st to June 30, whatever. That's the end of the school year. So if that's the negotiation that's taking place, that means we're just going to pay the bill. And so the last time this came, I said the exact same thing. I didn't want to see this kid here, I wanted the DCF worker to, you know, figure out placement before the school year started, didn't happen. You know, we're going to reiterate that again. And we certainly, from here on out, don't want a contract signed with that place because we're saying it, everybody's hearing it, that's in charge of hearing it. So if this happens again, I know that I will vote no. And I won't be worried about a lawsuit because we made it very clear we're not going to pay for this anymore. With that being said, this is a contract we signed, we're legally binded to it. If I thought the child was in dire harm there, like immediate danger, then I would hope that the DCF worker would pull him from there, certainly. Because I like to believe that people in this line of work are doing it for the care and protection of children. And they are trying to do their best to make sure this child is as safe as possible. You know, so again, I'm going to be voting yes to pay for the full bill, which takes us to the end of the year. Because otherwise, this child's not going to have anywhere to go. He doesn't have a home that's safe for him to go to. And that's sad, but that's the truth. And it's disappointing, but that's the truth. So that's how I would go, but I'll tell you right now, I won't do it next time. With that being, I yield.
Anything further, Ms. Rodrick?
So just to my colleague's point about, like, going to the legislature, that is something that advocates have done for years. And that's how it ended up in court, and that's how the UN ended up denouncing this as a placement. I disagree that going to the legislature will do anything at this point because they're already well aware, and they've already done that advocacy work. What comes next is, if we continue, if people continue to fund a placement like that, it's going to continue to operate. And so by us sitting here and agreeing to it, and everybody has the ability and the right to vote however they want, but I just want to remind folks that what is legal is not necessarily what, necessarily what is ethical. And what is legal is not necessarily what's moral. And so, you know, with, with all of that being said, this isn't a kid who's going to be thrown out into the street. DCF and, and placements cannot just throw a child out of a placement and call it a day. It's not like this kid's going to end up homeless, that's not the case. Is, will that kid be removed from that placement? Likely. What is more likely, and I can't speak for DCF's thought process on it, but what is more likely to happen is they will foot the bill while they deal with the other side of this. Typically, that is what will happen. It's not going to end well, I'm not going to pretend that it will. It will not end well on our end because unfortunately, someone signed a contract without doing, frankly, their due diligence about looking into the placement. Because when that contract came up, we did not have to agree, but we did. And so now we're stuck with it. For me, I'm not comfortable with saying that this kid's life is worth $178,000. And that's how I look at it. Because we're talking about a child, and we are talking about a child who clearly has had a history of trauma because they wouldn't have ended up at JRC if that weren't the case. And I'm not willing to put a price tag on that. So when I look at that, you know, we, we advocate, we're in positions of power, whether or not we want to accept that, but we, we have to say something. Because if you don't say something, again, you're promoting what we permit. So I feel very strongly about this. You know, this could be any one of our kids. And if we, if we're talking about inclusion, if we're talking about equity, then we've got to look at this across the board. And what kinds of programs and what kinds of placements are we supporting for our kids? Yeah, somebody went ahead and signed a contract that frankly shouldn't have been signed. We can't go back and undo that, but that doesn't mean that we also have to support it. Again, what's legal is not necessarily what's ethical. And having a kid in a placement like this, I don't believe is ethical. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Agia.
My last point is that if we don't put a stop and say, the reason why I said six months, if we go with this and just say it's going to happen for the year, we're paying again for the next year. And we're going to pay again for the next year. So we're going to be making a decision by saying, "We're just going to pay this bill for the entirety of this child's education", in my opinion. Because there's no, whether it's urgency on our side, their side, or whatever, if he's in a placement that people feel he's getting a good education, they're going to continue to fund it. And his IP says that, that's where his placement is. You said it earlier, you're just going to continue. So it's going to continue for year on end. So this isn't over today if we just say, "Okay, it's 12 months, and then we're stopping it". The reason why I suggested six months was to put a little bit of pressure on them. As well as, we're here November 15th. The kid was in a placement starting July 1st, as you just said. So we're here now looking to pay a bill that's already four months old. So we'd be actually getting them close to being, being flush at, at six months with that acknowledgement. Even then, I don't think we can guarantee he's going to be left. But I'm sure they'll look a little harder if they realize that we're not just going to pay the bill. We pay the bill, we're going to pay again next year, and we're going to pay again the year after that as long as this child is still to be educated. So if it's not going to be six months, I'm going to vote no. Are you?
I just want to make a, a point of order again. Did you make a motion to the table?
Yes, I did.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, I think that that is the prudent course of action. I hope it's Ms. Farias, but I hope it's someone else. I want you to go to the school, see what the plan is, find out what they're doing with our student. If any of these horrific things that we hear are going on, then I'm definitely going to vote to kill it as fast as I can. If not, you can come back. I'd also like a DCF report about their efforts to find additional placements in front of the committee for the next meeting, along with the past due 23 and the full bill. And we'll see what they say when, after you come back with your report, or whoever you designate to do it for you, Kristen.
Okay.
Is that okay? I got a motion to table in a second.
I'd like to make sure that we have at least two people from the district go together. Possibly the new special ed director. Might make the most sense because she's going to be at that podium answering the questions.
That'll be both, that'll be two. I, I agree with that 100%. So I got a motion to table two people to visit the school. Any discussion on that table? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay, we have one more. Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative.
I just sit on that board, so I just need to abstain from that.
Okay, we have, oh, the reason it was held was for the abstention. Thank you. Any discussion on that one? Mr. Agia.
Just maybe on the separate cover, Madam Superintendent, can you tell us if we're getting any discounts on these particular placements at SMAC and South Coast Collaborative? I don't need the answer today.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. No, no further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
I need a motion.
Motion approved.
I got a motion in a second, go ahead.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
I'm staying.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item 11 is approval of grants. We have a number of grants, actually only three or four. Any discussion on the grants? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Discussion, none. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrie?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.1, Committee of the Whole. Presentation and discussion, the HVAC and lighting improvements to various schools is presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer. This is informational.
So the company that's here tonight and the packet that you have within your, your packet is from Amaresco. Amaresco's been a partner with the city of Fall River since 2008. They're an energy, an ESCO company, an energy service company. And basically, all of the work that they do is usually paid for or will end up reaping the benefit of the full cost of those replacement repairs through energy savings. Amaresco did the lighting for the city, the street lighting, a lot of other projects in our schools. They did the, some heating improvements at, at the government center. So I have three individuals here tonight representing Amaresco to go over that, that packet that you have from the company. Bill Garbati, Hal Meyer, and Mark Turner. I think Bill is going to speak.
Thank you, Ken, and good evening, School Committee. So as Ken mentioned, Hal's actually been the one for us who's maintained this 15-year relationship. We're talking about a program tonight for five of the schools, two of the junior high schools, three of the elementary schools. We're looking at eight measures focused on mechanicals and controls. It's around building readiness, air quality. The key project is at Talbert, which I understand has, needs a lot of improvements, has been neglected a little bit. And there, we're going to do a heat pump conversion. So basically, it's electric heat now, but we're going to convert those unit ventilators to heat pumps. And that'll not only heat more efficiently, but it'll also provide better ventilation and air conditioning. Over at Henry Lord, we're going to be replacing the windows and remaining doors. And we're also going to be replacing the unit ventilators there. And we're going to be upgrading controls and some of the rooftop units. At the three elementary schools, we're looking at upgrading controls, rooftop units, adding variable frequency drives to pumps and motors. And at Sylvia and Borden, we're going to replace the air conditioning chiller that runs those schools. There is savings, a lot of this is capital project-related, it's about $165,000 in savings. We're going to be leveraging about a half a million dollars in utility rebates. And the project schedule, we'll be managing multiple contractors over an 18-month period to get this project done and close this out by September of 2024. And I understand that we'll be working, I look forward to working with the Facility and Operations Subcommittee to finalize details and bring this back next month to the whole committee.
Any questions on the Amaresco presentation? Mr. Agia?
Can you just quickly summarize? How do you make any money when you work with the city? Are we just paying you, or are you making money through other options? Like, what is the financing of?
Yeah, so the city would pay Amaresco. Amaresco, this is a Department of Energy Resources Energy Management Services program. So it's, it's very straightforward. They also have to approve the project. It's basically an open book project. Amaresco has a thick set of markups to, to manage our... And then we work with Ken and his team to, to pick the directs and the subcontractors that would implement.
So you get paid by the Department of Energy Resources?
I'm sorry?
Where do you get paid from, sir?
From the city.
Your company? So I'm just looking at, it says cost and savings by school?
Correct.
And it doesn't, it just says the four schools. There's no line item that says Amaresco. Am I missing where that would be, or how much that is, or?
So there, there is a cost, there is a cost table, the measure cost, that our fee is in that, in that table, in that first column, measure cost.
So how much, if Talbert costs 5.7 million, how much does Amaresco get?
It's not a, it's not as straightforward, I, I don't have that. We would go through those details, I think, with the Subcommittee in terms of how that breakout works We would go through those details, I think, with the Subcommittee in terms of how that breakout works between the directs and the indirects.
So you don't know?
I don't have that with me, no.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I guess this is just informational, but I think that's one of the first questions anybody should ask is, why are we hiring you to do this and how much is it costing us to do it? I think that's just the basic question. So I think somewhere in your presentation, it should say what you do to make money. Somebody's got to pay you and your folks and whatever, you know, work you're doing. I recall in the past seeing your company at the city side talking about savings of energy conservation savings. So you would say you paid a million dollars in bills, so we're going to save 500,000 of that. And that 500,000 would be kind of where, I don't think that's what this is, but maybe it is. But those are the type of questions that I personally would have to decide what it is. My last question is on the Talbot. You've mentioned about keeping it electric. We've been hearing for years about making that a gas, trying to convert that to gas to have it be more efficient. Are you saying there's a better process than converting it to gas?
Yeah, we've been working with Ken and the team to address that and look at both solutions. And given, you know, the current environment around electrification and some of those goals, and looking at the heat pump technology that's available now, we felt it was a better solution.
So you're saying it's better than the gases?
It's a more cost-effective solution.
To keep it electric?
To keep it electric.
Is what you're saying.
Yes.
And that would be, when you look at the savings, where would, the energy savings, is that on the chart?
Correct.
So you're just saying, if we pay 5.2 million, we'll save 60,000 in energy?
Correct.
Have you worked with anybody else in the school department other than Ms. Pacheco? Related to our heating and system, heating and ventilation or anything?
With other?
On the school side?
Our engineers have worked with some of the other staff members.
Good. Thank you very much. If you can get that information, those are questions I would ask at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Any further discussions for Amaresco? Okay, thank you guys very much. Ms. Pacheco.
Thank you. I would ask that the committee make a referral to Subcommittee.
Okay.
If that's appropriate.
Looking for a referral?
Motion to refer.
Second.
You got a motion, a second to the Subcommittee. Any discussion? Mr. Agia.
I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, I'm going to reserve my rights to ask whatever questions I feel at a full Subcommittee meeting regardless of the, some, a presentation spending this kind of money to the Subcommittee. Just to tell you ahead of time.
What is it? I didn't hear you, Kevin.
I'm saying that if we refer this to the Subcommittee at the tune of whatever the amount of money that's here, 15 million dollars, I'm just saying to you or to anybody that wants to listen that I am going to ask questions because I'm not on that facility Subcommittee meeting, committee. So if we wanted to streamline it, we might want to refer this to like the finance where we did for other ones so we can ask our questions once instead of twice. But I just wanted to let people know I will have questions and I'm not on that committee, that's all.
That's up to you. Do you want to make that?
Mr. Chairman, it wasn't meant to go to FNO so it could be done under the cloak of silence or secrecy or anything like that. It can be done in finance, it can be done here tonight. It can be done anywhere. I mean, it's not that kind of thing.
Let's refer it to our next finance.
What do you want to do, Kevin? Make a motion?
Well, don't we do that? Let's do our next Finance Committee meeting. That's fine. I have a motion. Do I have a second? No, we don't, just to refer it to the, we'll just put it on the agenda for the Finance meeting. Let's go. Next item, 12-2, Presentation and Discussion of the Data by Dr. Tracy Curly, Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening. I know that we did a lengthy Subcommittee meeting. And some of you may have had the opportunity to look through the notes to that meeting or the presentation that was posted online. But I'm going to take some time tonight to just go through some of that information again and actually highlight some other information that nobody on the committee may have, may have already seen. So we'll take a look at the Accountability System summary and what all of the elements are of the, of the Accountability System, take a look at some big takeaways from the past year and then over the last few years, our prioritization for the 2022, 23 school year, specific looks at some of those elements and then some school-specific data at the end. So something I just wanted to highlight is that MCAS is the biggest contributor in terms of school and district accountability, whether it be achievement on MCAS or school growth on MCAS, student growth on MCAS. It is the biggest contributor. And so when we look at MCAS over the last four years, it's just important to note that in 2019, that had been the last full administration for grades three through eight and 10. And when we look at our third grade students who took the test last spring, they were actually in grade one when school was interrupted in March of 2020. And then our grade 10 students who were the high school test takers last year, they were actually in grade seven when, when schools closed. So, and that was the last, they were in grade seven the last time they took MCAS. They were in eight when schools closed. So what we have this year is what Desi refers to as accountability light. So schools and districts didn't get any information based on their progress toward the targets that had been set. Districts, you know, don't have accountability profiles or anything like that. But the schools did receive percentiles in terms of, you know, how they ranked against other schools in the state. So it's based on MCAS data, which I said is the primary factor. Anywhere between 80 and 90% of it for the non-high schools and then 60 to 70% for high schools. Access data for our English learners, chronic absenteeism for grades one through 12. And then for the high schools, advanced coursework, four-year graduation rate, the extended engagement rate and the annual dropout rate are also some factors. So as we take a look at just the 2022 MCAS, we did see that, you know, mixed results. There wasn't any particular pattern that we saw across grade levels that was true for math, ELA, and science. But what we did see was a decline in the ELA scores in grades three through eight. And we saw that grade 10 did show some improvement over the previous year. Math scores in general increased and that was something that was true across the state. And then we also saw grade five science scores increase, although we saw a dip in grade eight. We do know that we have a long way to go across our grade levels and subject areas as we look to fully recover the learning losses. But we feel like we're on the right path, so we'll talk a little bit more about that. What we do see in terms of gap closing, closing between our white students and students in our subgroups, whether they are students of color, Hispanic students in other subgroups, we are, what we're seeing in terms of gap closing is that it really attributed to the declining performance of our white students. So we thought we were seeing some encouraging data, but then realized that the gaps were closing for the wrong reason. What we have seen over like multiple years is really that we're performing below the state across grade levels and content areas. We know that in ELA and math, the performance gap between us and the state actually widens. So it's not as bad at three to five as it is at six to eight and then in grade 10. We know that we have significant gaps for students in the high need subgroups, including English learners, students with disabilities, and students of low income. And we know that for our black, Hispanic, and multirace students, those students are facing challenges throughout their careers. One of the things that we landed on coming out of the data dive for last year was an instructional priority to which the, you know, the district as an entity subscribes to. But it's something that all schools have adopted in terms of their making improvements and priorities for the school, the current school year. And that is providing all students equitable access to and engagement in grade level work and beyond using appropriate instructional scaffolding as needed. And we landed there coming out of some extensive work that we did, taking a look at some work from TNTP, 2018 study, which said that students need four key resources in order to be successful in school. And so the four that were identified were great appropriate assignment, strong instruction, deep engagement, and high expectations for all students. And what the study found was actually that students are coming to school, for the most part, ready to learn. They want to learn, they've got big dreams. But that, for the most part, students were being denied access to these four key resources. And that acts, the lack of access was more significant for students of high need, low-income students, students with disabilities, English learners, and then also students of color. So we, we're taking a look here first as we start to look through some of these indicators. The first thing that we want to take a look at here is student growth. So we know, as I said, that we have a long way to go in terms of recovery. And in order to recover, we're going to have to accelerate learning and accelerate student growth pretty rapidly. But what we've seen over the last couple of years of full MCAS, full MCAS administration, is that our students really aren't growing at an accelerated rate. We fall more in the typical range. So really, all we're kind of doing is like keeping pace potentially with other schools as, as students are progressing. And so that is identified as an area of need in terms of the work that we need to accelerate student growth. I'm going to start by taking a look at the ELA work, the ELA outcomes. One of the things that stands out, and this was true in terms of, you know, when the state looked across all schools, urban schools, and then certainly it rang true in Fall River, is that, you know, the theme really is about kind of slowing the bleed, making sure that we're not on a continuous road of decline. And so when you take a look at a slide like this one and maybe even focus on those last two lines, it's really about the difference in a decline, where we want to see a turnaround, we want to see things on a little bit of an uptick, or we want to see less loss from year to year. So the change from 19 to 21, you can see what that loss looked like in grades three through eight and then 10. And when you look at that column for the change from 21 to 22, what we're seeing in grades three through eight is less loss. And then in grade 10, we actually see a little bit of an uptick. So it's a sign of recovery really in grade 10 and a different kind of recovery in grades three through eight. This next slide shows grades three through eight ELA with kind of this highlighted data that refers back to what I was talking about in terms of our high need students, low-income students with disabilities and our English learners. And just taking a look at the performance gap really between our high needs and non-high need students. So in 2022, only 18% of our high need students actually met or exceeded expectations in grades three through eight ELA, where we see our non-high need students meeting or exceeding expectations at a rate of 51%. In grade 10, we see similar data where our high need students are meeting expectations at a rate of 27%, where non-high need students are making, meeting expectations at a rate of 61%. So this is a slide here that shows what we're doing in ELA. And I think as we go through some of the math and science data, what you're going to see is it's the same kind of activities, very purposeful. So we have things in place that we're continuing to support, things that either started last year or the year before that we continue to support this year, and then some elements new to our plan. The theme here in terms of ELA, and again, we'll see it across the content areas, is that we're supporting the implementation of high-quality instructional materials. One of the things that we said was that students do not have access to grade-level resources. In our adoption of high-quality instructional materials, we're, we're taking that step, you know, it's one small way that we are ensuring that great appropriate material is in front of all of our students in all of our classrooms. We're supporting the consistent use of digital intervention platforms, Lexia Core 5 and PowerUp, which is something, again, that we started last year. The biggest change that we're seeing for this year is that all of our schools are using it and that we're seeing increased rates of student usage across schools. And then the last piece there, differentiated school supports based on need. It's really about the way that our directors and other members of our central office team are supporting schools where they are. So everything is focused on our instructional priority in terms of access to grade-level work and scaffolding as appropriate. But all of the different ways that we're doing that, that we started last year and continued this year, whether that's providing the, doing observations at schools and providing feedback to teachers, working PLCs, modeling, observing, offering feedback there, PD planning and facilitating support for leaders, one-on-one problem solving, and monthly cohort meetings. The new pieces this year, again, a lot of commonalities you'll see across the content areas, is really about piloting new curriculum at the middle school level, which is something that we really haven't had in a long time in terms of a core curriculum that's used across middle schools, high-quality instructional materials. Our leads are participating in the evaluation of academic leads at the, at the school level, facilitating monthly meetings. And then if you take a look here at the ELA, a lot of work focused on early literacy, the science of reading, partnerships with outside providers for some schools, and continuing that support and development of teachers at schools that are not participating in some of those programs, the writing revolution across ELA and, at all schools, and then also other content areas. Same kinds of things show up in social studies. A lot of the work that's doing, that we're doing in social studies certainly is focused on the social studies content. But when you take a look at some of the things that are new to the plan, also included there are a lot of supports for schools in terms of building literacy, and that includes the writing revolution. Our math results look a little bit more promising, as I had mentioned. We see, when you look at that change from 21 to 22, you see a lot more pluses there. So it was, wasn't so much about stopping the bleed where we lost less or we declined less from 21 to 22 than we did from 19 to 21. We actually saw in, in a few grade levels, we saw kind of that turnaround where we'd taken a dip in 21, but we're on the upswing in 22. Same kinds of patterns, though, as we look at the high needs group as compared to non-high needs. 16% of students meeting or exceeding expectations in the high needs group and 45% in the non-high needs. And then in grade 10, high needs at a rate of 17% and non-high needs at a rate of 53%. This math slide really does show a lot of the same pieces. The high-quality instructional materials, digital platforms that are in use consistently across schools, and then the differentiated support based on need, new to the plan this year. Some of it has to do with those digital platforms, the elevation math in Mathia Flex, ST math, which had been a program used in only some of our elementary schools, which is now used across all elementary schools. And then those other pieces in terms of evaluation of academic leads, vertical lead meetings, design of PD, and tiered intervention materials. Science, as I had mentioned earlier, we did see an uptick in grade five, but we saw loss in grade eight. Grade 10, we don't have as much data on simply because it was a new test for our test takers in 2022. Same pattern here in terms of the high needs and non-high need students and the rate at which they're meeting and exceeding expectations. In science, again, we're looking at supporting the implementation of high-quality instructional materials in many different ways, and it looks a little bit different at each grade level. We're also using needs-based support in all of our schools. And new to the plan is really more of that work of supporting implementation of the high-quality instructional materials. We do have, I'd mentioned, obviously, that MCAS was the biggest contributor, but there are other elements to the plan in terms of the Accountability System. The next one here is chronic absenteeism. And what we're seeing here at the bottom, there's a 2019 rate and a 2022 rate. Those look a little bit different at a first glance. It looks as if we actually had a major improvement from 2019 to 2020, but, to 2022, I mean. But in 2022, the, the difference there is that for accountability purposes, we were ranked based on the percentage of students with, who were absent 20% of days versus the 10%. So in 2019, we had almost 19% chronically absent. In 2022, that 10 is based on a chronic absenteeism rate of 20% of days. We do have plans in place for attendance, in place and continuing to support. We do have attendance officers, eight of them working across schools. We're doing home visits. Every school has an attendance team, setting up student success plans for students at the school level. We've added community facilitators that are assisting in communication with parents about the importance of attendance. We're starting up the Attendance Task Force again. And we do have school and, school-wide and district-wide attendance goals. New to the plan this year, our parent square communications for attendance as well as the new SEL curriculum in grades six through eight. The next, the next piece here is around access, progress of our English learners towards English language proficiency. And what we see from 2020 to 2022 is, is a dip for our non-high school. Where in 2022, we're seeing less than 41% of our students who are making progress toward their goals. And at the high school, just under 15% of students making progress. The multilingual learners department has been collaborating quite extensively this year with our content leads from other departments, specifically those content departments, but also in, for Unified Arts. So we do have some new curriculum in grades six through eight, Sendgate Curriculum Time Zones and Impact for Level 1, 2, and 3 students, and then the American Reading Company for our DLE program. They're also supporting the use of digital platforms, most recently tonight, with the addition of Imagine Learning for our DLE program. Differentiating, differentiation of school supports based on need looks somewhat similar, I think, to what we're doing with content directors across schools, where our coaches and coordinators for the MLL department are in schools, facilitating PLCs, providing PD, doing observations and offering feedback, and all of the things that our directors are doing. And then new to the plan this year is the rollout of elevation math with all of our middle schools in Durfee. That was something that had been initiated as a pilot in just a couple of schools, but we've been able to roll it out across all of our secondary schools. And also looking this year to leverage elevation as a platform for professional development for teachers. It has a lot of really good information for, for teachers that we just haven't leveraged in the past. in the past, and that's something that's beginning this year as well. One of the indicators that's specific to high school is advanced coursework, specifically the percentage of 11th and 12th graders who are taking advanced coursework, and we saw from 21, 20 to 22, an increase in, in that percentage of students. Durfee is doing a lot in terms of making, making those increases, specifically increased enrollment in the early college program, increased enrollment in AP courses, expansion of Project Red and Black, and the building of a co-op program for CTE. The other pieces that are contributing to the high school percentiles is the four-year graduation rate, which we saw an increase from 2020 to 21, the extended engagement rate, which pretty much stayed the same from 2019 to 2020, and the annual dropout rate, which decreased slightly, but generally speaking, was flat from 2020 to 2021. Again, again, we're doing a lot of work specifically up at Durfee, but also over at RPA in terms of improving these rates, credit recovery options, workforce development opportunities, expanding access to CTE for more students, expanding access to enrollment in Evolve, which has grown, re-engagement events for students, and portfolio-based MCAS submissions for substantially separate special education students. So depending on whether it's non-high school or high school, and whether or not student, schools have enough students to contribute to the number of Ls taking access, the percentages change, you know, a little bit in terms of how things are weighted, but generally speaking, MCAS is, you know, is the boss in terms of those, whether it's for achievement and growth, and then we have access and all of the other chronic absenteeism, and then the high school indicators. So those are all listed here, and one thing to just point out is that in 2022, the school percentiles were calculated using two years of data, and it just depends on the indicator as to which two years were used. You know, for, for MCAS, it's 2019 and 2022, because those were the last two years where there was a full MCAS administered, but some of the others are just dependent on when data is collected and, and available. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of schools before we got into the percentiles for all of the schools. The first one of those is Spencer Borden. Spencer Borden is our highest-ranked school, and it has been for a few years. It's a school in the 53rd percentile. But while we are, you know, we celebrate kind of the gains of, of Spencer Borden, you know, across the board, you see different highlights at different grade levels, but the one thing this year that really stood out for us was taking a look at the percentile rankings of the subgroups. We've identified in the district kind of this pervasive issue of our subgroup data being really low in comparison to the data, you know, in a particular school. We see high need students who might be performing at one level, we see, I'm sorry, non-high need students performing at one level, we see their high need students performing at a much lower level, and we're doing the work that we need to, to, to support all of those students. But when we look at Spencer Borden, it's this anomaly for us, because when we look at their subgroup data, they're, the students who fall into those subgroups are outperforming most other students in the state, and it's really something to celebrate, and it's something that we're trying to look at a little bit more deeply because we're outperforming, they are outperforming other students in those subgroups across the state, and we're looking at what promising practices are in place that we can replicate across our schools. The next school that I wanted to highlight before getting into the rest was the Henry Lord Community School. Henry Lord is a school that in 2018 was in the 6th percentile, grew into the 10th percentile the following year, and then has been working so hard, and coming out of 2022 found themselves in the 12th percentile. Really such a big thing to celebrate for them because our schools and schools across the state are identified as schools in need of assistance when they're in the lowest 10%, and this is a school that has made such great gains that even though that 2019 data, which had them in the 6th percentile, was contributed to their 2022 accountability, they still found themselves coming out of the 10th percentile and into the 12th. So it speaks to the fact that in 2022, as a standalone, we know that they ranked higher than the 12th percentile, and that's a big, a big jump from coming from the 6th and certainly more than the 12th. The thing that stands out here is that Henry Lord's middle school students in math, ELA, science, all of their 2022 scores improved over 2021. We saw increases at the middle level there across content areas, but when you look at their grade seven scores, the, the, the most impressive thing is that they're, in 2022, they didn't just like bounce back from 2021. In 2022, in both ELA and math, they actually saw their highest data. So at a time when everybody's trying to just like recover, maybe lose a little less from year to year, this is a school that's actually saw in 2022 their best data ever in grade seven, and it is cause for celebration because I think that speaks to just the work that's being done, the traction that the school is getting, and the trajectory of the work that is there. So really, really something to celebrate. This last slide actually shows the accountability percentiles for all of our schools in 2019. So that 2019 accounts for 40% of the 2022 ranking. And what we see generally across schools, many of our schools, is that we, we stayed pretty much the same, you know, either whether it's starting in the second percentile in 2019 and staying there, or being in the 16th percentile and just dropping a little bit to the 14th. What we're seeing across many of our schools is that there wasn't much change in terms of their ranking in the state, but we did have schools that stood out and it increased and identified Henry Lord. We know that Spencer Borden kind of knocked it out of the park for us, but I also wanted to recognize Watson in the 6th percentile in 2019 and in the 10th percentile now. So that's a school that we feel is really on the cusp of coming out of that lowest 10%, and that too will be cause for celebration. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Aguirre?
I'd ask some questions at the other meeting, so I don't want to reiterate those, but the, I'd asked for some information on this school data by grade, and I don't see that yet. Is that?
Yeah, so we, we did talk about that and what, like, what that looks like across 16 schools. So I think that if it, if it makes sense to do it, what we can do is put together a packet to send out in the Friday email.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just was, at the committee level, it was just to look at the subcommittee to look at the scores, and that's why I asked for, I thought it would have been beneficial for the whole committee to see it, but I didn't see it here. I just didn't know if it was an oversight or if it's just on its way, but I think that's data that we should see.
Sure.
Disaggregated. The, I said at the meeting, my personal, I'm very concerned about the achievement levels in the school. I think you agreed, Mrs. Ponce agreed, there's action steps that you've put in place. I made a statement, and I'll say it again, that over the last six years, let's say, we've spent millions of dollars in resources. Most recently, in the Student Opportunity Act, it went up even more, but we have put the investments into the schools, into the programs and the services. We're just not seeing the results, and that's disheartening, but it's something that we have to, we have to get our hands around because we're spending a lot of money, additional money, and we're not seeing the results of that. So we have to do something bold, in my opinion. I've said that all along. What I would ask is that in the action steps after the meeting, we talked about new, new things to be done, whatever that wording is that you put in, I'd like to request that every two months, we have reports from the superintendent related to those action steps because I think we can say today that we're going to do the following 10 things, 20 things, 30 things. If we don't get reports on them and measure them, some of those might not come to fruition. So I'd like the committee to get the 60, every 60 days, updates on how those things are going. The attendance, we talked about it being just something that we can, we talk about this every year. Madam Superintendent, any luck with the reporting of the attendance officers to the principals?
Well, I've, I actually have had a conversation with some principals, and they feel like that their work with the attendance officer is very positive, the way it's structured. So I think that what I would like to do is, we have the new Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Special Education who oversees them. I think when she comes on board in two weeks, that we need to have a conversation about what makes sense in regards to how we redeploy or, I mean, they are all assigned, I've met with them, they're assigned to their schools. Principals have not complained or expressed concern about them not doing the work at the schools, so I think we need to have a deeper conversation with, with the new Assistant Superintendent when she comes on board.
Yeah, I didn't know we, we were at that point with an Assistant Superintendent.
She's coming on board in two weeks.
No, I was just, I had never heard of that before. This is my first.
Oh, no, I was talking about the special ed person that actually shared duties with that, the new Assistant Superintendent.
Right, because the attendance officers work for the other job that's not filled. So therefore, the attendance officers haven't been reporting to anybody for the last year and a half.
Well, that's not so. They reported to Dr. Taylor last year, and I've met with them, and they know that I will be overseeing them until we have the SEL person on board. Until then, we're, as an administrative team, the two Assistant Superintendents and I, we will share those duties.
Yes, I, I've asked this nicely, I've said it in various ways. To me, that's just saying, let's do more of the same. So we've been without, whether Dr. Taylor, she didn't work here, she was on leave, and she didn't supervise those attendance officers for her time here, in my opinion. So we've had no direct supervision of those folks. So I've suggested in private conversations and in public conversations with you about, I think, a way that we could actually get some, a different level of support to the schools by having them report to them. That's a pretty basic function. So I'll take it by your answer that you brought it to the principals, and the principals chose not to have the person work for them. So as one member of the committee, my patience with the fact of not getting the information and our attendance not going up, our attendance being atrocious, our chronically absent students being atrocious, my patience as one member of the committee is pretty much done. So now we're saying, let's just not have oversight. We'll wait and find somebody when they do it. It, it's just not working. So if you think that's what's the best way to go, then go with it. I'm telling you right now, my patience with attendance is, is beyond done because we're not doing what we need to do. There's not consistency, I've said it privately and I've said it publicly, there's not consistency across every school to follow our own attendance policies. You know that that's not happening. Part of the reason why I suggested this so that we could get a system in place to have it go, but some principals probably just don't want to have it, then they're going to accept those attendance levels. That's what we're going to go with. That's a decision that can be made, that's a decision that should have been made, and I'm disheartened to say that it's not, but we'll go with more of the same, and we'll wait for an Assistant Superintendent to come on board so we can address it in maybe June.
I, I mean, I, I will say that that's not, we're not saying because we don't have somebody on board, there's no oversight, that's an operational piece that we're working internally. I think that everybody owns their attendance at the school levels. Yes, we do need to have consistent practices in place, but we are working through them. Nobody's happy with the attendance the way it is, Mr. Aguirre, nobody is, and we all know that it needs to be changed, and everybody's got attendance goals, the district as well as each school, and we're working towards changing that narrative. Certainly, we all know kids need to be in school, and when they're in school, we need to engage them, and we'll take responsibility for when they're in school, but we need to work with families and the community and the schools in order to get kids in school to do, so that they can be successful.
I, I do have two things I did want to say. I had a conversation with Lieutenant Governor about these scores statewide, and I mean, you got hit bad with the pandemic and employment. I don't think people understand how difficult it is right now hiring teachers that are top shelf. I mean, every district's scrambling for them, everybody's looking for them. If you listen to the superintendent's report, we've had 16 people already leave since the beginning of the year while we hired 54, so that's a net of 38. These are, these are people that want to be teachers, when they get the reality of the difficulties of the position, they don't hang in, they can't hang in, and it's better they leave. Don't get me wrong, but at the same time, those gaps are draining us in, in different subject areas. I think when you have kids home on a monitor, learning for a year at a time, these scores are reflective of what you see in most of the gateway cities. It's, it's a struggle, and we're not throwing the towel in. Mr. Aguirre is right, we're spending millions of dollars on these things, but that's because the state has given us millions of dollars to correct this, and we're just going to have to keep our pedal to the metal. As far as attendance, I, I, I can't stress enough to parents that you're the key component in this whole piece, as far as I'm concerned. We have them for six hours a day, you have them for 18. If you need help, you contact a guidance counselor, an adjustment counselor at the school, and let us know that there's follow-up, but we need your help to get these kids in school, and we really, really do. Those are one of the things that's always frustrated me working in the schools for as long as I did was attendance, and I think it's gotten worse, and I do blame a lot of that on the pandemic, but I'm glad to see we have some new baselines going forward. Not saying I want to be you, Dr. Curly, but I, you know, I wish you well. I think you're gonna, you're gonna have to grind it out, and it's going to be a long slog, but we got to get these scores up. That's, that's where I hear about most of the scores and attendance, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have anything to say? Ms. Rogics?
So just a comment, really. So the gap between our high need students and our non-high need students is pretty large, like you've mentioned, but I also want to point out that we have a very high percentage of high need students, so that really worries me that that gap is so big. We have about an 87% rate of high need students, so I'm, I'm looking very concretely for what are, and you don't have to answer this right now, but very concretely, what are we doing to help bridge that? And I understand that that gap has gotten a little bit smaller, but really not for the right reasons. So I'm looking for like specific action steps for each group, which I think is reasonable, for each group, each school, for what are we going to do to help bridge that gap, because it's a pretty significant one.
We, I think there was so much data that we didn't spend enough time on the action planning itself and the prioritization, and I, you know, I mentioned this idea of high need students and what we need to do, right, so that they do have access to the four key resources. We are, our focus this year is really on that grade-level content. So we recognize that without access to grade-level content, there isn't any way that students can achieve at grade level, they're not going to make growth toward grade-level standards, and so that really has become the priority. So when we talk about spending the millions of dollars that we have on those high-quality instructional materials, that really for us was just the first step, and we spent time last year trying to get schools engaged in using them, in using them with fidelity, with, with support. This year, we are in a much better place in terms of schools, I think, understanding, appreciating the, the materials, teachers having better access to them and what those resources actually present to them in terms of their planning, and the amount of time that's being spent on planning using the resources. So that's our first step, and then we recognize that just putting the materials in front of students is not going to be the thing. They can't do the work without those resources, but we're spending much of our time, most of our time, really on working with teachers in schools around planning with those resources for grade-level content and trying to establish what students need. You know, for a couple of years, we were talking around about just-in-time intervention, making sure that we were teaching kids what they needed to know at that moment, just to access, just to access the materials. But we, we're trying to go beyond that right now. That becomes one piece of the scaffolding or support that we're providing to students. And when you talk about this idea of that gap being crazy because the students who are meeting expectations at a particular rate, that is a relatively small number of students, when we look at the fact that I think it's like 87% of our students fall into the high needs category. So I, we recognize that, it's why we're putting all of our energy there, it's why taking a look at something like the opportunity myth and focusing on those four key resources makes sense in Fall River because so many of our students fit the description of the very students who, generally speaking, are denied access. So it's, I'm with you, and I think that what we can do in terms of And I think that what we can do in terms of kind of general reporting is make sure that we're reporting out on those action steps. I like that idea. I like the idea of our holding ourselves internally accountable, but whenever we're able to do that publicly and share the work with people, I think it's just supportive to all of the work.
So this might be a silly question, but we keep talking about making sure our students have access to grade level material. Why haven't they had access to grade level material?
So I think that some of it was the fact that we had some, we had a couple of different things. We had curriculum that potentially was outdated or we had schools who, some schools who were using one thing, other schools using another. I think that became more and more difficult to support over time. It's where getting the same resources in everybody's hands has made the work and the collaboration, I think, much more doable, really. And because we're able to provide professional development at a larger scale, we're able to get schools to collaborate in terms of their planning much more easily. It just makes sense to do that. But I think certainly the money that has been made available in the last couple of years has given us an opportunity, the way it was intended to, so that we could get the, the right materials in, in students' hands. We still, to be honest with you, there are still some content areas or grade levels where the materials still aren't available. They're being developed, it's, you know, the Massachusetts Department of Ed will be endorsing something, but we just can't get our hands on it yet. So we're kind of back failing and supporting people until we can get there. But where they're available, we're, we're getting them into classrooms.
With that, I yield. If I can just clarify about the SOA. Yes, Mr. Aguirre is right, we have gotten a lot of, we've invested a lot of money in our students. What the SOA funds have done is equalize, provide our students with, with the resources that we haven't had. Like we, we haven't had the money to do for our students what we needed to do. And what the extra money has done is made us look at our schools, look at our needs, provide professional development for our staff, provide resources that are, you know, research-based and make sure that we provide all of our students with what they need when they need it. And we've had to scrimp and save for years and years and really just make ends meet. And we finally are able to support our students the way they need to be supported. This is what our students are owed. This isn't extra money, this is an investment in what our students deserve.
Thank you, Dr. Curly. Oh, Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just had a couple of comments. One of the things at the subcommittee that really took me for a little bit of a loop was a couple of comments that were listed in, under the end-of-the-year survey. And one of them talks about lack of high expectations for all students, says, "In an end-of-the-year survey, nearly 40% of teachers responded disagree or strongly disagreed to the statement, 'I am confident all of my students can master the skills I am teaching them in class this year.'" That's one comment. The second one was the lack of research-based practices and content across grade levels. In the survey, nearly 40% of teachers responded disagree or strongly disagreed too. "I have the tools, strategies, and support I need to help every student in my classes achieve this year's learning goals." I think those were, to me, were two alarming statements, that that's what they felt when they went in. And I don't think that they should have felt that way along the years with the investments that we've made. So I agree with the superintendent, this year's money went way up. But we weren't doing something right to have these comments made, even with the millions that we had beforehand. So it's not just, okay, the new money comes in, everything's going to be better. This talks about, I think, a systematic issue of something that wasn't working. Also, I'm looking at my notes, I said, "Get the results," I asked for the results of the survey, haven't gotten those yet as well. The Spencer Borden one, which I, is ironic that when you mentioned it related to, this is the only slide that we have that shows the breakdown like this. But it, it's showing in the 80s or 90 percentile of all those divisions. And the white demographic is at 35 percentile. So I think that's more powerful than just a slide, but it means nothing to us if we don't get it across the whole system, to know what happened, to know the background about, okay, what does that mean for those people? Are they just barely over the number? Are they, you know, we know the school's in the north end, it's more affluent school than other places, what is it? Like we, we as a committee, I think, need to get some of these answers to say, look at the data, look across all of these schools. That's why we need, I think, the breakdown. So that we can compare each of the schools.
That particular slide for Spencer Borden is not available publicly. It's not anything anyone could just access on the website. So I'll make sure that I include that for each school and when we share the school-based data. I think some of it looks, you know, we're, we're always taking a look at the schools and trying to figure out, the percentile is, there's so much that goes into it, right? In terms of the MCAS data for multiple years, multiple content areas, there's that weighting of the 40, 60. So we've been trying to kind of dig into schools to figure out, you know, what is it that kind of makes the difference, right? Because what if Spencer Borden didn't make improvements? They didn't make improvements at every grade level and every content area, right? They might have slipped in one area and made some gains in another. So there wasn't really anything like super concrete that you go like, oh, that's the thing. But that data certainly stood out to us, especially in comparison to all of our other schools. The, the subgroups in that school are really outperforming other, other schools. It's, it's, it's pretty impressive. And so it's a place for us to really dig in. Outside of that, schools are doing the work and we're supporting them to do the work where, you know, they look at a particular grade level and things slip or they make an improvement and we want to identify what it was. But that, it's the kind of thing that, you know, we can't do on our own. I think, I'll be honest with you, I feel like there's, there's so much data, right? There's data on the website, it just doesn't tell the story. So I feel like to, it's difficult to just kind of put all the numbers out there and not talk about them in context of the work that the schools are doing. Schools did develop prioritization plans, school improvement plans. And I think that it, I've talked about this with Superintendent Ponce, you know, our, you know, responsibility to share them with the committee. And I think that's something that would be really helpful for the committee, to see what schools are doing in response to the data. So I would just make a suggestion or a promise or whatever it is to get that information to you. Because I do think that looking across 16 schools and all of the data and all the different indicators, it's, it's hard to piece things together if, if you're not aware of the actual work that's being done at the school. So that would be something to share.
I agree with you. You can say, superintendent can say, "Oh, we went to every school and we did a great data dive, we did this and that." That means nothing to me, to be honest. Because I don't have anything to say, what was the result of that? What was the summary of that? What did the principals think about the data? What are, this, nothing, zero. So I think you're right, we need to get some of that to have a little level of confidence in that when we say we did a data dive and then we get no answer back after, then it's like, well, what did that mean? You went there and looked at some data? I'm sure you did more than that, I'm being facetious, but the point is, it never comes to us.
Right. When we do the data dives, I mean, generally speaking, the people who attend the meeting, everybody has seen the data. And the discussion that we have at the table is really around the school's plan. So even though it's not a lockstep look at what is your school improvement plan, it really is taking a look at all of the components of it. Because school leaders really just talk through their action plans for the year in the context of that data. And I think that that would be the information that would be most useful.
And while we're on the data dives, were those done individually?
By one meeting at each school, yes.
So part of the concern that I have is that across this system, we never do things across the system that are working across all areas. So we have pockets of things that work in this district for years and years and years. So when we go to meet, they might go to meet my school and I might be able to show you a few things or whatever. Then you go meet Ms. Rogic's school and wow, she's, she's on it, she's got everything going. But I'm not sitting there watching what she's doing to know what she's gotten and the next person and the next person. So to me, I think getting everybody together to be able to say, everybody's doing the same system. That's why I'm so hot on this attendance officer thing. Because I've been asking this for years and we're not doing the same thing. Some schools are doing it much better than others. Nobody can, can go against that. But the same thing here, we got to get everybody in the room together so that when we have pockets of excellence, it spreads. What we do is just do it in silos and then we say we did data dives and I don't have the confidence that that is enough.
But I, I will say, we do meet with our principals regularly, Mr. Aguirre. For you to say that we don't do anything consistently, I, I mean, I, I disagree.
I'm not saying anything, if I did, I apologize. There is pockets of, of things that are working.
There are, you're right. And, and we do, like, you can't possibly do a data dive where you have all 16 schools at the table with everybody doing the same, it was like two-hour sessions, one-to-two-hour sessions with each school. We do share best practices or look at district data as principals. So, and we are putting a system in place where we're looking at the triangle schools. So we're going to do a walk, Talbot, Fonseca, and Watson, Watson and Fonseca feed into Talbot. We're going to go and all three of those principals are going to join us so they can go see their feeder schools. So we are doing some of those things. I, I think that what you're alluding to, perhaps I need to communicate all those things that I'm doing and that we're all doing. But I, I think there is a lot of work that's being done. We're not where we need to be, yet, but you're right, there is a lot of work that is.
I know, I, I don't disagree. And I'm not trying to say that nobody's doing anything. I know people are working hard, the result's just not there. So we have to figure it out. At the committee, I asked you a question and you gave the most honest answer I heard at the old committee. You told me the scores are awful.
Yeah, they're not good.
That's the most honest answer that I heard at the committee and it is what it is. So we have to do something different. So the scores aren't good, we are doing a lot of good things in the schools. All I'm asking for is that we have a system where we're all working together a little more so that the achievement will then therefore come. That's all, with that, I yield.
Okay. Anything further? Thank you, Dr. Curly.
Thanks.
Next up, 12.3, Power School presentation, Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer.
You all received some information in your packet for the meeting. I can tell you that SIMS has been accepted by the state and we are currently working on EPIMS as we speak. This data is being used through Power School to report and also Aspen, so it's a, you know, a collaboration of both systems. The SIMS team had some early issues with the SIMS reporting, some bugs were worked out. Power School has been excellent since they met with us last month. We have strategic support contacts now, we have basically a phone into the Wizard of Oz behind the curtain to get to some of those more pointed questions that we have and issues that we've been having. I can tell you on the enrollment side, we're already making provisions to begin to open the registration window for this coming February, for next year. On the health module, we continue to work with Power School on some of the more intricate issues that Karen Long and her team are seeing as far as the way they would like to see things work. They have been very receptive to that and we continue to troubleshoot with them on the daily and the health module. On the special program side, I just have to give a big thank you to Kristin and her team because they have been amazing in this process, working through the bugs and the frustrations on our end. And I can say, and Kristin can probably wave behind me, that we are finally getting to a point where we are getting more comfortable and the bugs and the frustrations are getting less. And it's also been helpful that we've had that strategic support to use with the SIMS team, with parent, with Power School directly. A big piece was parent access. That became a tremendous lift. I can say with certainty that all middle and high school families have received their communication via Parent Square with their code. Any of the families that did not receive the email, it's because there was not a communication or an email in Parent Square. And I just urge those parents to contact their student's main office. And once they have verified, you know, some questions that it's indeed the parent, they can get the code and then they can download the app and they're good to go. We have also rolled out Student Portal on the high school side, so the students now have access to the Student Portal. And as we get into the coming months, elementary grade level students, parents will also receive their codes coming up. And I can tell you that we're working on the standard-based report cards as we speak with Power School to get those to basically match up to what we had in Aspen X2 so that there's no lift there. Just some priorities moving forward that I'll probably talk about in the coming months when we meet. We're going to continue to move our data from Aspen into Power School. Again, 20 years of data, there's still stuff that we're moving in on the daily. A big push is going to be made now to take some of those reports that we use on the daily and translate them into Portuguese and Spanish. That is not something that happens automatically, that's something that we'll have to do as a district. The SIMS team, along with myself, have reached out to other districts in Massachusetts to see how they do things. It's actually interesting that some of the districts do not even provide translations, they provide it in English. And there are other districts that are providing stuff translated as well. So we have some avenues that we can discuss, something that I would probably bring to the technology subcommittee meeting first and then we can bring to the full committee. And the last piece that we're going to start working on, just like we do with the budget season, we're going to start asking the end-users what they'd like to see. We've started to use the project, you know, the program, we're moving forward. We want to know what they like, what they don't like, what they'd like to see change. So we're going to start some focus groups after the holidays. And that'll give us, as well as Power School and central administration, time to decide if we want to customize things moving forward or if we want to stay with the base model. So those are some just brief updates on the Power School side. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions on Power School? Ms. Larvee?
Hi. So just a quick question. So the survey, when is that coming out?
So Mr. Michael Azic and his team are working on that now. We're actually working with Power School on that. We have a meeting next Tuesday, some best practices. They're actually helping facilitate that. They've done it with some larger districts. So I hope that that would be out the first or second week of December. It'll give us some time over the holidays to digest it and then have a plan moving forward that I would bring to the, you know, technology subcommittee meeting and then back to the full body.
What do you mean by staff groups?
So just basically guidance counselors, what do you think about your use, nurses? Just some of those more pointed areas so that way we're not just getting a general teachers, paras, office people, attendance officers. So there are going to be some different questions for each of those groups so we can get a better look at it now from a higher level and then we can start to clean up the process.
You're just, so you're just grouping everybody? Everybody's getting surveyed?
Correct.
In groups?
Correct.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further for Mr. Cabral, Mr. Aguirre?
So I had gotten a complaint a while back that the system was down for multiple days. And then at the time, I had asked for an update of how pervasive has this been? Because I also heard complaints it's been down a lot more than what we would like.
So Power School works off of pieces called plugins. So if you have a plugin from Power School, basically they bumper-to-bumper warranty it. If you use a plugin from a third-party application or they kind of have their own store like Apple or Google does, you take that and you use it on your own. So we had a plugin in there that we were using early on because our attendance and our enrollment numbers weren't lining up to what were true numbers. So they recommended that we use this plugin, third-party application, we put the plugin in and come to find out, that's what was slowing us down. So the plugin has since been turned off. Mr. Michael Azic and his team are looking at different options for plugins. However, right now, we don't need it because our attendance and enrollment has been cleaned up. There was an issue with that data pull from Aspen into Power School, so that piece is correct. So overall, we were down a total of two days. One was a good chunk of time, it was about eight hours, the other was about four or five hours. And then just last week, we were down for about 37 seconds because once we saw the slowness, Mr. Michael Azic turned off the plugin and we were back online. So we are not using that plugin now and knock on wood, we have not gone down since.
So since the start of the year, you're telling me that Power School's been down for eight hours total?
It's been down for about, I would say about 13 hours total between the two lodges, I just kept correct.
That's not what people have reported to me, but I'll take your word for it. The other thing is, is there things called Power School mentors? Is that like a teach the, train the trainer type of thing?
So, so right now, we have grade book mentors. That was the language in the, you know, form of contract with Dex 2. They're basically the same people. Mr. Michael Azic actually approached me last week and said that he may actually request some more time for those mentors this year, just because it's a much larger lift and a new system, something that we will talk about centrally in our senior staff meetings and then bring back to the body.
So what is it, a stipend, is that?
Correct.
And right now, nobody's getting them?
No, there are grade book mentors, the current ones that we're in, you know, last school year are still all current.
Every school has them.
Every school has them, how about departments?
No, it's for grade books.
It's for gra, it's, all it is is for grading.
Yeah, I think if I could make a suggestion that the specialists, I, I take them as sort of a specialist on the thing to tell people what's happening, to help with it. I think special ed needs one, myself, because we have a lot of people doing the work here with the IEPs. You might as well have a go-to person that if you're going to do that for the people people that are just doing daily grades, that we're doing IEPs all day, too. So, having somebody get a stipend to be the resident expert on that, a go-to person, might make some sense.
Something that we can definitely look at. I can sit down with Kristin and the new Assistant Superintendent, and we can formulate a plan moving forward.
Great, thank you, I yield.
Anything further for Scott on this?
Thank you, Scott.
Next item up, 12.4, is a discussion and vote to approve the Communication Specialist Job Description as referred by the Technology Subcommittee and presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director, and Scott Cabral.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that advertisement? Here and none. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.5, is discussion and vote to approve an additional SEL liaison position at Morton Middle School, as presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director.
Two, two additional.
Two, I'm sorry. Two additional SEL liaison positions. Mr. Coogan?
This is similar to the request that came before the committee last month for Talbot. It's for two liaisons. Morton has sort of a unique internal structure. They use two houses, and each house contains sixth, seventh, and eighth grade cohorts. What he's asking for, he has one SEL liaison now, he's asking for one for the other house, and he's also asking for one for a sub-separate strand. He has a total of 87 students across nine classrooms that are being serviced, would be serviced by that additional SEL liaison. Principal Davies here, if anybody has any questions for him specifically, but this is very similar to the report last month.
Any discussion or questions?
Is the principal here?
Yes, he is.
No, I just wanted to say hi, that's all. We've never met before, that's all, I just was curious. Thank you.
Ms. Rodericks?
I would say, you know, how many more do they need? But, the other middle schools, how many do they have? Do we know?
Currently, we have two at CUS, and there are three at Talbot. Three have been approved at Talbot by the committee.
Okay, so I'm just looking for equity based on their needs, right? So, if they're getting two more, do the other schools also need more? And I'm just putting it out there as a question to go back to those schools and really say, like, let's evaluate how this is going, because I know that this has been a huge support for our folks, and so I'm just pushing that we go back to the other middle schools and say, hey, this is working well in these areas, these have been some of the best practices. I know Talbot uses them really well, you know, what is it that you guys need? That's all I'm pushing. I'm not, it's not about approving this, it's really about looking at equity based on what the other schools need as well.
Any further discussion on this model? Mr. Agia?
I just assume based on what Ms. Roderick said, that the other schools haven't asked for it?
Yes.
Because Superintendent, I think, said she took out a thing.
Absolutely. CUS has two, and they're in the midst of hiring their third one, so they'll have one per grade level. Talbot did the exact same thing, they wanted one per grade level, and Morton is the one that only had one.
Okay.
And then they're asking for two more.
Okay. Do we have any at Doran and at Henry Lord?
They have.
They have at least one at each of the schools. I could give you a...
I asked, actually, Principal Bronhard, and she said she was staffed the way she needed to be staffed. I mean, principals know that they would come, so, and we have been really good about bringing their requests forth, so that's, I agree, that's been a huge, huge support in schools.
Which is why I just keep bringing it up, like, making sure that they know that that's an option, that if it's something that they needed, that they can request it. I yield.
Anything further? I get a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.6 and 12.7, the Superintendent, go ahead.
Right, with the permission of the committee, I'd like to hold those two positions until after executive session, if that's okay.
We'll hold those two till later in the meeting. 12.8, is a discussion and vote to approve the job description for the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative Grant Coordinator, as presented by Tom Coogan and Kristin Faris.
Motion approved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Agia?
It just looks like the salary's $25,000 part-time?
It's part-time.
And then, it says in there that you have to commit to at least a half-time of FTE, and may be funded by the grant, so are we not taking advantage of a full-time person?
Oh, actually.
So, this position is part of that Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Grant, and so, right now, based on the size of the grant and the size of the initial program, what's recommended is a half-time grant coordinator. So, it's fully funded by the grant and focused on the work of that grant specifically, and so the grant initially has one classroom at Headstart, one classroom at People and Preschool, and we will have an itinerant special education team that is servicing students at both of those sites.
Am I reading this wrong, though, to think that the grant would pay for a full person, and we only gotta commit half to those particular?
No, the grant's only funding a half-time person.
I'm just looking at where it says, "The grant coordinator must commit at least .5 of an FTE to the grant work, and may be funded by the grant." So, I'm looking at that as they could have a full person, they just have to commit, so the person could do other things for the other half of their job and be a full-time job. Probably better to try to getting somebody to be full-time than part-time.
So, the grant, you have to have at least a part-time person through the grant? Based on the size of our grant and the size of our program, only a half-time person would be appropriate right now. So, if we wanted a full-time staff, they would only work for the grant half-time, and it would be something else the other half of the time that's district-funded.
But, it says it's funded by the grant, so they're telling me that the grant isn't gonna fund the other half, to work for you, and on other things?
Correct. The grant is only funding a half-time position right now based on the size of the grant and the size of the program that we wrote for.
Is this the thing we talked about with the students staying in those programs, so that?
Yes.
I think it's where they have a full, personally, but, you know, if it is what it is, so, I make a motion to approve.
Sorry, are we already?
A roll call?
Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.9, is a discussion and vote to approve an additional Speech Language Pathology Assistant and Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant Position, as presented by Kristin Faris, Interim Administrator of Special Ed. Welcome, Kristin.
It's my night. So, currently, in the contract, the cap for service delivery for our Speech and Language Pathology Assistants and our Occupational Therapy Assistants is 55 students. We have the majority of our providers at or near that cap at this time, and so, based on a review of current services, as well as what we are projecting out in new students, we are requesting an additional SLPA and two additional CODAs.
Any discussion? Ms. Rodericks?
Do we have enough folks supervising, enough SLPs and enough OTRs supervising those SLPs?
Yes, we do.
Like, those, our folks have capacity to do that?
For the new ones, yeah.
For the new ones. Okay. I yield.
Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, call the roll on these positions, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.10, is a discussion and vote to approve the spending of $1.370 million on the City Council appropriated, as presented by Maria Pons, Superintendent of Schools.
So, as you know, the city owed us $1.37 million. City Council approved the transfer. At this time, I'm requesting that we use $300,000 and apply it to the special education tuitions, and that we use $1,070,000 to be applied to the Derby Athletic Fields.
Any discussion? Ms. Larrabee?
Just a question. I don't know, maybe you missed, what would that leave us?
What's that?
For the fields.
So, it's all based on pricing and whatever comes in, so it's kinda, it's, I can't, I can't give you a dollar. We need the bits to come in to figure out what it is, but to get the Derby project completed, it's gonna get us pretty close to where we need.
Beautiful. All right, I yield, thank you.
Ms. Larrabee, thank you. Any, Mr. Agia?
The $1.3 that came over, I thought that that was money that we knew when we did the budget, that we had already spent in the budget. They just had screwed up some numbers, basically, at the time?
So, it was. So, the $1.3 million was money I originally had assigned to tuitions, and the tuitions aren't as high as, you know, we anticipated, so I'm using funds, part of the funds to go towards the fields.
Okay, I don't see that in this, this particular memo here. So, what it sounds like is, we had had a budget, we knew we had spent all that money. At this point, now you're taking what you had anticipated for tuitions, is what you just said, off, to now be able to spend this money.
Yes.
But, I just don't see that in this, I don't think that necessarily it's truth in advertising what we had. We didn't have $1.3 million. We knew that they had shorted us, so we had spent that $1.3 million already. So, I'm an advocate for the fields.
So, we submitted a budget to the City Council that was a million, I'm sorry, to the mayor, that was $1,370,000 more. When the budget went down to the City Council, it was less by $1,370,000. I had to take it from somewhere at the time to balance the budget, and I took it from tuitions. So, the money, so now, as part of bringing that money back, I only need an additional $300,000 in tuitions to cover me through the end of the year. I know that the Derby project is ongoing, that the athletic fields are ongoing, so I'm assigning the rest of them, we are assigning the rest of the money to the Derby fields.
I don't disagree with the thought on it. My thing is, is that procedurally, when were the committee gonna get the notice that we took that money off of the tuitions, is , I guess, the question?
I guess I'm telling you now.
Do you understand the question, Madam Superintendent?
Yes.
So, I'm not disagreeing with where we spent it, but at the time, let's say this money didn't come to fruition, or the tuitions were fully what you thought they were going to be, we would be in a different place, where we wouldn't have this money, per se, to advocate for.
Correct.
So, I'll speak for myself. I, when this money came through as the $1.3, I never called the Superintendent to give her my opinion, because I felt that was already money that was budgeted already. With the fields, I think we, where are we at with the city relative to having any kind of bonding ability to do projects? That's been ongoing for...
But, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. We cannot, as a department, bond. The city is the city. They are the folks that bond for the city. So, I can't bond as a school department, I cannot bond.
Can you pay a bond?
Can I pay a bond?
Yes.
Yes, but that's debt service that gets paid through the city.
So, it can happen.
But, Mr. Agia, debt is not eligible for net school spending.
Yep, I get it. I understand.
Okay.
Madam Superintendent, I've suggested now, for months, for months, to say, in order to fund this project, we have to be together to look at ways to creatively figure out a way that we can have a situation where we could bond some money to pay these projects, and we could pay the bond back. Now, I've asked that for six months, or more. I've gotten zero information from you or anybody here to say, oh, we can't do that, or we negotiated it. What I see is, eh, just, no, we can't do it, so that's it. That's not, that's, to me, as one member, that's not acceptable.
Mr. Agia?
Because if we don't have the money to pay for these projects, I don't know how we're gonna do it. We're getting lucky here with this $1 million that's in, that we are gonna pay for this, that we couldn't pay for something else. But, I'm getting tired of the fact of, we suggest something, get no response back whatsoever, and then just say, well, it just can't happen, because we don't bond. As simple as that. Just let it go, let him say what he's gotta say. It's not a valid thought, it's not a valid suggestion, it's not something that we should go to the legislature to try to create an account, to have a rainy day fund for the school department, any of those things. All those suggestions fall on deaf ears, because you just don't think that we need to do it, and you're not telling them that we have to get a legitimate answer.
Point of, point of order. I just need to, I just need the comment, please. I need to comment.
Enough.
No. I need, I need, I need to comment.
Right, so, when we ask a question, we don't expect somebody to give us an attitude back, that's all I'm saying.
Nobody's giving you an attitude, he's answering your questions.
Well, maybe you're not watching the same meeting I am.
I'm watching. He's not giving you attitude, he's answering your questions, but we have to be respectful. There's no reason to talk about passion or anger. Just ask him his questions. You don't like the answer, vote what makes your heart warm. But, at the same time, this gentleman's trying to do a job, as these other people are, as you are. But, there's nobody yelling. There's no reason to yell. Ask him whatever you want. That's how I look at it. If you wanna make a motion, get your votes, well, do what you want. There's no reason to get mad.
All I asked was a simple...
No, you're mad.
All I asked was a simple conversation to be had.
It's not simple when you're yelling.
Okay, so if it's not, then give an answer.
Then just ask.
That's all I'm asking. I've been asking for six months, Mr. Mayor.
No, you're not, you're yelling right now.
Okay, can I, I just need to respond, please, and respectfully, okay? We are not a regional school district. Regional school districts bond on their own, okay? We are a department of the city, we are part of a municipality. The cities are the ones that have the rights to bond, okay? The treasurer's office, they're the ones that have the rights to bond, not the schools. Mr. Agia, I try to do everything I can, in my ability, to make all these projects and everything come to fruition and make them work. As you can see, I'm pretty frugal with the money. I do a pretty good job of balancing the budget all the time, and taking care of all these extra projects, and doing all these additional things that we do with your help, okay? You know that I do that, okay? As far as, like, a sped stabilization account that we've talked about in the past, once we get to net school spending, any dollar amount over that that we get, absolutely, I'll throw it into a sped stabilization account. But, right now, the way the law is written, there's nothing I can do about it. There's nothing I can do about it. Any money we put into a sped stabilization account, it's silly right now for me to come to you asking for a sped stabilization account, because right now, we have no ability to take claim to that money once you put it in there, because once that money's put into the sped stabilization account, it doesn't count towards net school spending. Unless something is done, it doesn't count. So, the city has, gets no credit for the money that they've given us that we've put aside. So, until we get to that point, once we've hit net school spending, and we've met, and we've hit that threshold, there's nothing we really can do that's gonna benefit the city or benefit us. So, I'm gonna do what I feel is fiscally responsible for our department. That is what I'm going to do, and I'm gonna try to spend the money as closely to the classroom as I can possible. That's all I can say.
So, Madam Superintendent, if you go back and review all of the minutes to the meetings and the conversations that we've had for several years since when Dr. Malone was here, and Mr. Almeida has been there now through both Dr. Malone and you, at the meetings where we had those conversations, the answer to this was, or the suggestion at the time, which was over a year and a half or two years ago now, was that you, or the Superintendent, or Mr. Almeida through his organizations, or through General, working with the mayor, to talk to the city, to the state delegation, to look at potential changes to the law, which would be one sentence, basically allowing us to save money like Diamond Can. That's all it is that I asked for, over a year and a half ago. So, I asked the administration, I asked Mr. Almeida to consider going to them, to ask for that, to advocate for that. Has that happened? I would say no, because if it happened, I'm sure we would've got an answer to say, we sent this letter. I think at one point, we made a motion to even send a letter to the delegation, that never happened, under the prior Superintendent. So, Mr. Almeida is correct, that under the current law, these things can't happen. But, right now, the legislature knows that they're throwing millions of dollars at us, so they should be open to any kind of suggestion for us to have a rainy day fund, to have something to, if we had it needed in a rainy day, that we should be able to do what the regional schools do. They should be no different than that. So, what I'm advocating for was to be proactive, talk to them, try to get some changes in the legislation as they're throwing millions of dollars at us that make these reserve accounts. I'm upset about it, because I don't feel like anybody took that serious, and I don't think we went to the next level. That's why I'm upset, because if anybody that would know, if we're getting $20 million here and there, instead of us falling all over ourselves to figure out how to prepay tuition and all this stuff, if we could just put that in an account, it would make everybody's life a lot easier, and it should count towards net school spending. That's a change that the law needs to happen. So, I think we're saying similar things, it's just, all I'm asking for is a little courtesy and respect to say, we looked at it, we did what we had to do, we've asked them to do it, and if they say, no, we can't do it, then we can't do it. I don't think that those steps have been, been happening, so I'm not opposed to this, but I do think that we need to continue the discussions, and if it's a dead end, then I think that we're owed at least a one-page paragraph or an email to say why it can't happen. That's all. With that, I yield.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve eleven is a discussion and vote to approve the proposed FY twenty-four budget calendar as presented by Kevin Almeida, CFO.
The, this is just the preliminary budget calendar for the upcoming budget year for FY twenty-four. Just similar to the previous years, following the same schedule. You know, these things are subject to change based on things that happen. So, with that, I'm just looking for approval of the calendar. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion of second. Discussion on the budget calendar. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve twelve is discussion of the year-end report and net school spending as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
So, at this time, the, we submitted the net, we submitted the end-of-year report to the state. In FY twenty-three, the budgeted shortfall at this time is just under one point two million. It's a million one hundred and seventy, about a hundred and seventy thousand. The difference is caused by the roughly six hundred thousand dollars in benefits associated with nutrition that will be coming out directly out of the account for the year. And it's attributed to the change in the assessments from when the budget was originally done till now. So, as, as always happens, the report's been submitted. The state normally gets back to us in the January, February timeframe and will continue to work with the city to get the money, you know, to get the money over the schools as soon as we can so that we can money, get the money spent on the kids. And that's it.
Any further discussion in the end of the year? Ms. Agia?
The, I've been saying this for a while, that in July, when we created the budget, we knew that the piece of the school lunch program, which listed at five fifty to six hundred thousand, we knew that that was not part of the budget, couldn't be used for net school spending. So, in essence, we knew that money should have been coming since July. So, the only problem that I have with these is that we've known that since July. And if we wait until March, we're not going to be able to do anything with the money. So, I would ask that at least that portion of it become over. The other things that could go up or down, maybe we did, we've done this in the past when we knew it was a million and a half, we asked for a million dollars upfront. That's money we can make a determination on what that can be spent on. So, I don't think this is asking for anything, but I just wanted to weigh in that the city knew about that money July one. We all knew about the money before July one. I'd ask that that at least be taken care of by the next meeting. With that, I yield.
Just notify Bridget, okay? Ms., any further? Could we get a, I have a motion of second?
It's just a discussion, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
It was a discussion item.
Next one is a vote. Discussion and vote to approve the submission of the funding application to the Community Preservation Committee for the following projects: replacement and restoration of the front patio rail.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion. Anybody else want to discuss anything on this CPC fund? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. The next one is a duplicate. Discussion and vote to approve the submission of the funding application for the CPC for the following project: replacement and restoration of seventy-eight windows at four seventeen Rock Street.
Still moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the windows? Ms. Agia?
Ms. Pacico, between the windows and the railing system, is that everything to make that building look pristine like?
That'll, other than a possible painter, so we're going to need to paint the upper parapet wall at some point and paint the front entrance of the building. So, that's the two items that are left. But as far as construction-wise, the windows and the, the railing in the front of the building will be the major construction piece.
And the railing is not those big columns that look ugly and are messy?
It's the, it's the, the railing is the front facing Rock Street. I say at the front, but it's the side of the building.
Right.
On Rock Street.
So, I'm concerned about the, when we walk into the building or anybody walks into the building, for years, they see those columns that are chipping.
Right. So, those columns, and those columns, the, the work around those columns and the upper parapet wall on the roof area, those are going to need to be painted. That's not included in any of this work.
And that's just paint? Like, they're not going to?
Yeah. It's seventy-five to a hundred thou-
They're going to repair it, paint, whatever?
About a hundred thousand dollars worth of paint and, and labor.
Can I please ask that the superintendent come back to us next month with a plan to do that? Because we have money and that's the place that people go to to look and it looks terrible for years. So, if we're going to get these other pieces, and I'm assuming that those projects are not eligible potentially, so we'll just spend the money to, to get that done to make the place look good. Thank you. I yield.
Can we get a roll call? Deb?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Thanks, Deb. Discussion and vote to approve the invitation from the MSBA to the accelerated repair program for the Robert Medeiros Resiliency Preparatory Academy to appropriate the sum of a hundred thousand dollars to fund the procurement of the owner's project manager and design firm for the feasibility study as presented by Ken Pacico. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion on the request to the MSBA? Deb, give it a, a roll call, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve sixteen is a discussion and vote to approve the reorganization of the Facilities and Operations Department as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Agia?
Just a, a question on this. So, typically, we've been having things come out for first read so that, like, for policies and stuff, so we can just get it presented and then we come back with the next meeting for a vote. What I'd like to ask on this, I have a lot of questions and concerns on this. I've raised them privately to the superintendent. What I'd like to request is that either we table this till the next meeting in order to some, get some of those questions answered, to not have a discussion in public here about some of those concerns, which I'm very passionate about, or we just do this as a first read so that we can come back at the next meeting with any potential changes. I know it's late and I-
What's the issue? So, you want to table this here?
Table it a first read.
Can you ask whatever, huh?
Table it or first read.
Or first read?
What I'm suggesting is if we have a first read for the full committee, so the subcommittee was able to make sure to talk about it, what I would, what I'm asking for is to make this a first read so that we can get the issues presented. So, that if we have any concerns over the next thirty days, the whole, all of the members can bring to, up to the superintendent any of those concerns without having to go back and forth here for an hour over all of the questions. That would be my suggestion. So, we have the first read. I don't have to ask all those questions now. I can digest it and talk to the superintendent with any of those concerns between meetings.
I mean, I don't mind how many questions you ask now. Is that something that's going to stop, prevent you from doing what you need to do if we table this and wait another month? So, Mr. Agia?
It's just waiting another month. It's, yeah, it's just waiting another month. It's not a-
Not a big deal to you?
No.
All right.
No.
Whatever. Table it.
Okay. We got a motion to table?
Second.
A second? I got a motion of second. Deb, call the roll.
Who made the motion? Is it Mr. Agia to table?
Mrs. Pereira made the motion to table and Ms. Rodericks or Mr. Agia? A second.
Is that what you want to do, Kevin? You just want to table and have time to digest?
Yeah, I think that would, that would be fine. So, I can ask my questions and hash through some things with the superintendent rather than do it here in an open meeting in public right now.
Okay. Fair enough.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
No.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep. For your information, we have a number of retirements, resignations, appointments. I'll accept them all at once.
Motion approved.
Second.
Can I get a second? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Laravee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodericks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Agia?
Just, I, when we had the technology subcommittee meeting, we also discussed adding a position called like a, we were working on the language of whether it was going to be a low voltage electrician of some type or whatever. And I think that that's something that I want to make sure that is either on the next agenda or because I think we need a position like-
After that last meeting, Mr. Agia, I was ill for eight days, just have not had a chance to digest it. We are going to talk about it internally and bring it next month.
Yeah. So, we had talked about whether we use the same job description that already exists because it, you know, just for your department specifically, as in a way to expedite the process. So, under new business, I'm wondering if that makes sense to do so we can have you guys just hire the person?
I, if, if it's okay, you know, with you and the committee, I'd like to come back next month. I'd like to revise that position a little bit. I'd like to sit with Mr. Pacico. I feel that where the avenue and technology with that position would go may not necessarily line up directly with what we have as a current job description.
Good. So, it'll be on the next agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. It's important. That's why I brought it up. Thank you.
Executive session. We have a request for executive session. Do you want to read the, the reasons, Mr.?
Sure. National law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven to review and approve the executive session minutes for October seventeen, two thousand twenty-two regular school committee meeting. National law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-seven to review and approve the executive session minutes for October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two technology subcommittee meeting. National law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Administrators Association as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law is chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eighty-three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Forward School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational, physical therapists and specialists in the teaching profession represented by the Forward Educators